Follow up for one? Everybody ready? We'll start the meeting. Salute to the flag, please stand. Want to lead us off, Mary? Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, Mary. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Mr. Arty?
Here.
Mr. Howie?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Special order of business. Communication, remote participation. Members of the public may view the meeting via LTC. And those wishing to speak regarding specific agenda items shall register to speak in advance of the meeting by sending an email to superintendent indicating the agenda item and a phone number to ask to call so that you may be teleconference into the meeting. Email address is mpalazzo@lol.k12maus. If no access by email, you may contact 978-674-4324. New business. Mr. Superintendent? Approval of the three school models?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have two speakers on this, on the next two items. Would you like to take the speakers between the items? Would you like to take them before? What would be the desire of the committee?
Yeah, why don't we do the speakers first?
Ms. Desmond, from you?
Oh, just the speakers are on the four-two, though, right?
How are they listed?
Yeah, four-two.
Okay.
So we can do four-one at first, if you want.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you'll notice that these two relate to one another, but they are separate items with separate recommendations. First, I want to recognize the members of the audience, which are our fine principals and school leaders that have come here tonight to share with the committee the status of the extraordinary work that they've been leading now for months on behalf of our young people in the city of Lowell. And throughout this summer, staff have been hard at work preparing for the upcoming school year, envisioning what a safe return to our buildings could look like and examining if it would be possible to have students, teachers, and staff back in the classroom. Prior to the end of last school year, we formed this task force, which included principals, teachers, support staff, and parents from throughout the district. And they were charged with looking at every possible model of education for the 2020-2021 academic year. So we are confident that we are prepared for any scenario that we may be faced with in September and beyond. Currently, this complex decision on how to go forward with the start of the 2021 school year is a local decision. And the state has required us to follow a two-step planning process for approval. The first presentation tonight is the first step, which requires us to submit a summary of three models: in-person, remote, and hybrid, regardless of what plan will be implemented in September, under the premise that any one of the scenarios may be necessary at any given time based on the local circumstances surrounding COVID-19. Again, I want to appreciate the hard work of the task force that has readied us. And I believe that Lowell is in a better position than any other district in the Commonwealth to submit three well-developed models. Dr. Guillory and the members of the task force, led by Dr. Kate McLaughlin, are going to take the committee through that presentation. And our recommendation is approval of those scenarios as required for submission to DESI tomorrow. But before yielding the microphone, I think it's important to remind the community that these models do not constitute our reopening plan, but rather scenario planning that is required for submission tomorrow. The second presentation tonight will allow us to continue the in-depth conversation of our actual plan for September. And a detailed report of the actual plan is required for submission to DESI on August 10th as the second step within the state's two-step local planning process. You will see that plan contained within the second presentation, which leverages the best thinking of the task force as well as feedback we've received from across the community. But again, before we get too far ahead of ourselves, Dr. Guillory will take you through step one, and again, my recommendations, approval as written. Dr. Guillory?
Thank you, Dr. Borre. Good evening, community. Good evening, school committee members. I'm going to, as I'm teeing up, invite Dr. McLaughlin to the podium, as I will hand off to her. So the agenda of the first presentation that we are sharing with you is an overview of the DESI Continuum, of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Continuum for the three scenarios in which we are required to submit a report. And those scenarios are full-in-person, hybrid, and remote. Dr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the school committee, Dr. Boyd, cabinet members, and community members, and our students, most of all, hopefully, you're at home watching. I'm just one person here of over 200 people who have been working tirelessly on this since May, volunteering their time. I'm especially grateful to the many subgroup leaders, many of whom who came tonight and rallied around this. We were charged with thinking about every what-if we could think of and put our best thinking around it. And that required our leaders, our teachers, we have paraprofessionals, nurses, you name it. They came to the table. There was no summer for these people. They, because they cared that much about each other and about the children. So we are deeply indebted to them. And I, as the convener, am deeply indebted to the leaders who made it possible from pre-K all the way through high school. So thank you to all of them. As Dr. Guillory said, we have to present very clear plans, whether we use them or not. And that was the big challenge for the task force, is thinking of every what-if. The other challenge is thinking about our terms. So when we first started with the task force, we kept talking about traditional schooling, traditional. And we stopped and said, there's nothing traditional about what's going to happen. So even calling it full-in-person might not even make it clear enough about what our in-person programming will need to look like. Because number one is safety and health of everyone. So take what you know about what school looked like and really put it aside. The one thing that will look very similar is the grade level instruction in our in-person programming. Our commitment to a rigorous curriculum based on mass frameworks, very important to us. We've also looked at a lot of the literature that calls for teaching at grade-level standards and intervening where students need the support. We can't go backwards with children. We have to keep the high expectations and fill in gaps as we go. Very, very important to our future. For what you'd notice in an in-person model that will be different is that we need to keep classes and cohorts together for safety, to eliminate as much cross-contamination, whatever you want to call that, as possible. So you would see things like allied arts having a longer rotation. Instead of going to music once a week, you might have music every day for 30 days to keep that cohort together. You will see children in their classrooms longer and the adults moving. We don't want to needlessly put children in a dangerous position of moving throughout the building. And the other thing that will be really transparent is the need for social-emotional learning. So starting every day with morning meeting or at the high school advisory periods, so that there's one consistent person checking in with our students, because their lives might change day-to-day as well with the stressors that they might be experiencing. The other thing you would notice that would be different is that it's going to be far more technology-infused. That's for a health reason. We don't want to be passing materials and papers and things around the classroom. But it's also to allow us to fully train children to utilize all of our equipment and the platforms that we're using. So if we have to pivot like we did in the spring, we're ready. The learning can continue the next day. And that will be very important. The other thing that technology will allow us to do is to have children stay connected without having physical proximity. So that they will be able to do group work, but they're going to be doing it through Google Classroom while they're sitting six feet away from someone. And that will be very important. We don't want children sitting in isolation because they can't be physically near someone. It will already be very difficult for kids. You know, they're not going to have recess the same way, those types of things. So we want to create the connections where we can. The benefit of in-person is we can follow all the current attendance and curriculum and grading and report card policies because they're in our schools. The main challenge with the in-person model, of course, is the operational challenge. So the safety and PPE training that we'll need for all of our staff and students and our families, the actual materials to do that, sanitation schedules, and the equipment, which I know we've already been working on purchasing, scheduling, because we'll need to schedule outdoor mask breaks for children at all grade levels. But we won't be able to have 100 children out in one space to do that. So it will take a lot of front-loading of schedules, having meals in the classroom, those types of things. We'll need storage for a lot of our classroom furniture because we'll want to maximize the space for students. Transportation, you've already discussed that. You'll need more buses and more routes if we're all in school. We'll need health screening. And we're going to need families to help us with that, that they're not sending their children to school if they have any symptoms. So we'll need to have that training for families in multiple languages. That will be a challenge. We have some space challenges in school where we'll need medical waiting rooms or isolation rooms and exposure protocols. Our subgroup, our Phase II subgroup, has done an amazing job of coming up with every what-if with those. We have our bathroom, you know, thinking about all our common spaces, bathrooms, and keeping those sanitized and ways for everybody to keep proper hand hygiene. Things you've already discussed as well, the airflow in rooms, the temperature, all of those pieces are very much on our radar. And then we'll also need individual materials for students. I'm an elementary principal, so I tend to use those examples. No more shared marker bins at tables, those types of things. So every child will need their own materials. And the other, the other big issue is we'll definitely need a virtual option for children who are high-risk. We don't want to put anybody in danger with this decision. For the family and community part, I already alluded to some of it, that we need all communication in home languages because it's going to be key to a lot of our work. We can't just rely on apps, especially for Kamai. We're getting a lot of information from our Kamai-speaking families that the apps don't always translate the same way. And that will be very important. We're also recommending that there are no visitors or volunteers in schools. And that we limit our use of facilities permits to just the healthcare, the childcare providers in that case, which is a difficult decision because we know there are so many community groups that do great work. But the sanitation is already going to be a challenge. And the best part for our families is that when we're in school, we can continue all the services that we give to children, already food pantries, meals, Katie's closet, those types of things. It's much easier to do when we're in person. In terms of when we think about the hybrid model, now, the hybrid model traditionally is thought of as you're reducing, your goal is to reduce the number of children in your buildings. So usually, they go on a schedule. I know you've heard about it already with our special ed summer school following it. So the recommendation of the task force is if we do a hybrid model, we'd have Cohorts A and B splitting the week in a school. So Cohort A would go Monday, Tuesday. Cohort B would go Thursday, Friday. And Wednesday would be an online day for everyone and a chance to do deep cleaning in the building between the two groups. But knowing that won't meet the needs of all children, the task force has recommended that Cohort C prioritize full-in-person for our high-need students. So students who need services, perhaps through an IEP, or need specialized English language development classes or things like that, that they be Cohort C for full-time. And Cohort D, again, carries over from what we just discussed, that there are children who need full-remote. They, they won't be able to do a hybrid model either. The recommendation also with teaching and learning is that we would have the, as I call it, the nerded upward is synchronous and asynchronous. But for all of those at home, synchronous is live teaching. So children joining live classrooms while they're at home. Asynchronous are lessons that are already either pushed out through Google Classroom. They may have videos to provide some instruction. It may be some independent activities that the students are doing to apply that. So you'll, you'll see those terms a lot. That's what they mean. So the team, to really differentiate what, what happened with our emergency closure, we would have far more live teaching or synchronous teaching. And that even if you were at home, you would still need to report to school in live teaching. And that would help us stay on top of who's engaged and participating and have everybody connected. Parents are reporting, I can't get them out of bed. They're sleeping till 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Like, well, we'll help you with that. You gotta be on, you know, at a certain time, or Dr. Kate's going to be after you. No. And then the other thing you would see in the hybrid model is really being purposeful about chunking the curriculum because you want your in-school time to be best utilized for application of new skills and thinking about that purposefully. Operationally, you're still going to have all the same challenges of the in-person, but it will be easier because you'll have fewer children in the building. So in terms of keeping bathrooms sanitized, for example. But you're still going to need all the equipment, all the schedules, et cetera. The other issue that you have with the hybrid is if a teacher is working in-person with children, who's supporting the children at home? And so we'd really have to think about how to utilize the limited paraprofessionals and other support people in the building to do that, which is, we think, would be very challenging, but we would honestly make a good effort if that's what you felt needed to happen. In terms of, it would also create some with sort of prep time and lunch coverage if you had to use some of your support staff and paraprofessionals. And if you had to use your allied arts people in a different way to cover some of those classrooms, you might come across some of those challenges as well. In terms of the full-remote, and you'll see there are things that are the same as hybrid, it's really important, we even thought, do we call this something else? Because for the teaching and learning with full-remote, we have to differentiate it from the emergency closure. So what, what you experienced in the spring is not what you will experience in the fall or whenever if we need this option. So please, please understand that. The grade level instruction is still going to be the same, following curriculum frameworks, having high rigor. And students and staff will have a consistent frame or schedule of a combination of live teaching and independent work, because nobody wants children looking at a screen for six hours. So the task force spent a lot of time thinking about what, what needed to be live and what needed to be incorporated in that day at all levels. And then they highly recommend for a pedagogical change, the flipped classroom model. So with a flipped classroom, it's been around for 20 years, but it's, it's had very different iterations. So what you would do is you flip it. The homework, if you will, in a flipped classroom, even if we were in-person, would be to watch videos of new content and have, teach children study skills to take notes and do that piece, so that you can allocate your class time to that higher-level thinking and applying what you've learned. So they're really recommending that to make sure that kids are getting that rigor and using choice boards and assignments for that independent application. There are still some operational challenges and benefits with full-remote. So as Chief Desmond has talked about, there's a lot of work being put forth to create a virtual school for the Lowell Public Schools. So we'll need staffing and administration for that. We'll need professional development for all of the technology and the technology platforms and the remote learning pedagogy. There's a cost for digital subscriptions that we'll definitely need to do this. You've already allocated a lot of money for one-to-one devices, and that's the key to making a better remote work. And we also think that the parents, and the parents on the task force told us, they really need one place to get all of their information, so that they know if their children are doing their work, what their grades are, what their, so that will definitely need to happen. We also have children who don't have internet service at home, so we will need to come up with a solution for that, so that they can participate. And for some of our students who are serviced through IEPs or 504s, they may need adaptive technology equipment or deliveries to their house of materials, of hardcover books or things that, to meet their needs.
Can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yes, please.
So when we talk about the Wi-Fi service, right, is that something that the city should be working with Comcast right now? To make, I mean, how are we going to make sure, if we're remote, that everybody does have internet service?
I might, I don't know, like, I can tell you what the recommendations are, what other, what we've researched. So there are mobile hotspots, they almost look like flash drives, that you could purchase. I believe it's like a month-to-month subscription, so they have no value after, you know, if we turn them off. So those could be for those families.
How much of those, do you know?
I don't.
We did do a cost out of that. Do you have that all?
I was going to say, I bet Chief Desmond knows the answer to this.
So we have done a cost out. We've looked at various providers. It is, to Dr. McLaughlin's point, a month-to-month rate that we would pay. On average, it comes to approximately $200 for 10 months of service. It is something that we included in our application for remote learning, for the remote learning grant. But it, it does come at a significant cost if you look at the number of high-needs families that perhaps would need that service. But we have cost it out. We have incorporated it into our remote learning grant, and hopefully, we'll get some, we'll receive some good news about the grant soon.
Do we know what the cost would be if you just signed up for Comcast? What they charge you just for internet? I mean, it might be cheaper to just buy subscriptions, like the houses. We should probably just double-check that. And then the other question is, we should be in touch with them, too. I mean, when we have our Zoom meetings, sometimes it's breaking up, you know?
Yes.
So once we get back into school and there's so much more traffic, is that going to be a problem?
Yes, I believe, and I am not an expert on this.
No, I'm not either.
My, my understanding is that when you buy the month-to-month subscription, you get the full broadband. When you have Comcast Essentials, which is the low-income, the $10 a month, that is not the case all the time. And then my other understanding is that if families owe any money to Comcast, that that can be a challenge to get Comcast Essentials signed up. So I don't know if that's changed, but that's what a lot of families informed us as school leaders in the spring.
Yeah, so Mr. Mayor, if I, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think you want to take advantage of your use of language of "should the city." I believe, yes, citywide Wi-Fi is an equity decision.
I would love that.
That this city should definitely invest in. And right now, I would say it's a necessity of our very way of life. The crickets or the mobile Wi-Fi, that's what we use in cases where we don't have city Wi-Fi. But quite frankly, most advanced cities right now have citywide Wi-Fi. We learned what we were broadcasting as a city, as citywide bandwidth, citywide Wi-Fi. When we went to full shutdown, quite frankly, it didn't operate as we thought it would as a city. I know with partners across CTI, we had maps of where you could access, how you could access. There were a lot of resources created under the guise of what we thought was available prior to a COVID shutdown. And just during the course of shutdown, that didn't operate and function that way for our families. So, Mr. Mayor, we would gladly take the opportunity to present to city council on the need for citywide Wi-Fi if that opportunity is presented. The cricket use, we have used elsewhere, that's kind of almost like giving your computer cellular Wi-Fi access as a plug-in. The subscriptions bring about a lot of complexities in terms of us purchasing The subscriptions bring about a lot of complexities in terms of us purchasing them for families, family subscriptions, that I can imagine you can think through, just from your own personal subscriptions and so on. So the crickets would be the alternate, we can provide those, much like we do with the, it's a USB plugin for the computer, we can invest in those or costs. But I really think, at this point, knowing what we know about this pandemic, the likelihood that this city will be, at some point, back in a stay-at-home order until there's a vaccine, that citywide Wi-Fi is definitely something that should be explored in conjunction with the city's IT department.
Yeah, thank you, I'll look into it. Sure, quick question. I didn't mean to jump in, but I just wanna make sure.
Well, to follow up on that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on that, what happens with a family that has two or three kids at different grade levels, and they all have to get onto the internet for their classes? Will that, will that present another problem or just another issue in terms of accessibility to the internet?
I don't want to, again, I don't wanna suggest that I'm a salesman of the particular companies that offer these plugins. I have had experience with them before. The committee may remember that I ran a virtual school in a past life, this was what we used for services that we provided. We issue them out with the Chromebooks, laptops that we issue to kids, so every kid gets one that gets managed with them. It should work much like theoretically, when you have multiple users of cellphones within your house at one time, and this should work much the same way. We have enough cell towers and so on throughout the city, shouldn't be a concern for us, as some agrarian communities might find. But I'd probably limit my feedback to that and wait for the experts to share more if we decide that purchase is necessary.
Right. And colloquial, I mean, I live in the Highlands, my two children are at Mr. Skinner's school, we would all be on in our house and on Lowell Comcast and be all on Zoom meetings at the same time, and it worked on all devices at that.
Well, we ran into the situation last night in our Zoom meeting, a lot of breakup, a lot of staggering and partial, could only hear some of what the mayor was saying, some of what Mr. Howie was saying. So I don't know if it's an issue with Comcast last night, but if, from time to time, there have been times when they're just, the bandwidth crashes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is what it is.
Yeah, it is.
Mr. Dillon?
I guess my own personal experience, I realize that being on Zoom meetings at my own home, when I was having trouble, I started to think about it, and I had about a dozen devices signed onto my Wi-Fi, just at my own home. So by turning, you know, turning off three tablets and a phone, and it helps, I guess. But it is, gets difficult when, you don't realize, when you have TVs and cellphones, computers, all that stuff is connected, it may certainly slow it down. But that's different than what we're talking about with the crickets, it's different service, it's not Wi-Fi. Right?
Yes.
Yep, thank you. Please continue.
All right. I'm almost done, I promise.
Yep.
In terms of going back to our full remote learning, the family engagement piece, again, it can't be, it's one of our highest recommendations, is streamlining our communication to students and families regarding everything, academic, social, emotional learning, and the internet. One thing we did really, really well is our meal sites. So that's something that we feel very confident we would just keep as-is and continue our food pantry and toiletries distribution. We, again, would recommend no use of facilities permits, which, again, is hard for our community people, and that we'd only have virtual volunteers, visitors, field trips, et cetera.
Can I just jump in for one more question?
Yes.
So the use of facilities, if it was limited just to the gyms and it didn't cause any spread throughout the building, I'm just thinking about money, maybe we should...
I understand, I think that in several of these cases, we are going to need to use that space either for storage or classrooms. In terms of remote, if it's too dangerous for us to instruct children in our schools, is it too dangerous to have the public in our schools? I'm not sure, that's an answer for you, not me.
We'll figure it out.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. And so, again, it's been a privilege to work with all of the people on the task force, they've done amazing work, we're deeply indebted to them, so thank you to them. And again, to say, our job was really to give you our best thinking, and you have the hard part, all of you, of making the decisions, but we're here to support you in all of that, so we'll gladly share any of our thinking with you. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? No questions? Anybody? All right, Mr. Arti?
Actually, I have a number of questions, but I felt that it was more important to save them for the plan that we're thinking to do. My understanding that all this work, and I really appreciate all the work that you all did and all the people, to explore the different options, but now, our focus has to be on, what's the one we're thinking to do, which I believe is a hybrid model, that I can support in a lot of ways, but I do have questions about. So I feel, for me, I'm okay with moving forward and digging into, you know, the one that we're really gonna be going forward with. Are you all gonna be here for that portion, or was it just for this portion?
I will stay as long as you like.
So where do we go from here, Ms. Superintendent? Is the next one?
I believe a lot of your questions will be answered by the next presentation, so I think you are wise, if you're asking me as a teacher, what would the right thing to do be?
There's a, thank you, Dr. McLaughlin. There is, so if I could, before we move on, I would recommend a motion to approve the submission, it's due tomorrow. This is not a, this is a requirement of submitting all three scenarios, it's called a preliminary plan submission. I believe it is to ensure the state that we have preparations in all three scenarios, but it's due tomorrow.
Okay, so why don't we make a motion approved by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon? Roll, do we need a roll call? Yeah, roll call, please.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Howie?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, so this next one, we have speakers, we'll go to the speakers first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Desmond's gonna kindly support us, the same way we did last time, to make sure we can support the technical difficulties that may ensue. So Ms. Desmond, there's two speakers, there's only one sheet, so Ms. Desmond, can you just share who the first speaker is and so on, as you may, as machine typically does? We took her cheat sheet.
The first speaker is Bambi Javi, and she's speaking on item 4.2.
Thank you, Ms. Desmond.
Hello? Hi, Ms. Javi, I am from the Department of Education, and I am pleased to speak on item 4.2. So, last question with the back-to-school model was, I am an essential worker, I'm a single mother, so I am just a little bit concerned about the going back to school, is there going to be before-school care, is there going to be after-school care? What options do they have for childcare for someone in my situation?
Okay, so that was your question, and we'll try to answer that during the presentation? Is that probably the best way to go? Yeah. Okay, thank you, we'll discuss that with the presentation. Are you all set?
I can't hear.
So the mayor is saying that the last question will be answered, is the presentation done? Do you have any other questions?
Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker. Well, the mic's not working tonight.
The next speaker is Paul Georges from the UTL, and he is speaking on item 4.2.
Hello?
Hi, Paul, this is from the Department of Education, and I'm pleased to speak on item 4.2.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Robin.
You're all set, Paul?
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, John. Yeah, this is Paul Georges from United Teachers of Lowell, I just wanted to remind the committee, as I did a couple of weeks ago, but one of the key components or things that are going to impact our ability to deliver services to students, or the methodology used, the choice to be made, has to do with the readiness or lack of readiness of our buildings to be occupied by students and educators. This is an ongoing problem, we had, whereas in the past, perhaps, air quality or ventilation issues were annoyances more than anything else, at this point, they're much more critical in nature, particularly considering the pandemic. I think there is, and I think parents have to feel assured, and so do educators, as they enter these schools, that they're not walking into a hazardous situation within the classroom or within their building. And we have been suggesting that there be a soft landing in, on the 17th of September, with online being the mode to be operative, and then adding up the capacity as schools are certified for use by what we would hope would be an outside impartial evaluator, as far as establishing the readiness and capability of being able to ensure a healthy environment for students and adults that would be educating those students in buildings, building by building. Again, it can't overstate the necessity to ensure that our physical plants are capable of holding students, particularly in the area of ventilation and air circulation within buildings. Too many cases, I talk with our custodians on a regular basis, in too many cases, there are filters that haven't been changed, or obstructions within airways, or mechanical failures that don't allow for the proper ventilation of fresh air into buildings. And as we all know, as we followed this pandemic, air circulation is one of the critical factors in ensuring a healthy environment in virtually everything that we do, including people's choice to go out and have dinner, or wherever else they're trying to find areas that are very well-ventilated to disperse and eliminate the coronavirus. So I just want that to be a primary, and I would say, from the perspective of educators and the union that represents the vast majority of teachers that would be in the schools across the city, we need assurance that it's a healthy environment before we bring our members in and our students in, that we care about, to make sure that they are adequately, adequate, I forgot my word, prepared, adequately supported within the classroom, starting with basic, fundamental health, healthy environment. So I would ask you to bring in an outside consultant, if you need to, bring in a outside agency, a state agency, perhaps, to certify the, to certify the habitability, you wanna put it that way, of our schools, school by school, so that we can feel comfortable educating students and bringing students into that environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
I believe that concludes the speakers. Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Thank you. So, as you heard me previously state, this is a two-step planning process. The first step you just approved, that's what's due tomorrow. This next step is due August 10th, hence the polling of the committee for our next meeting next week, which I think we probably, as I was joking earlier, stop adjourning these meetings and just have a continuation of the same meeting. You are all part of my quarantine zone at this point. So this next presentation is our current best thinking on how we can maximize meaningful options for families within the current context of COVID-19, as we head into September to start the school year. This is not a plan for the entirety of the year, and that requires important emphasis, this is to start September. This plan leverages the best thinking of the task force, as well as feedback we've received from across the community, including survey responses from over 2,500 families, and virtual discussions with over 1,000 parents, staff members, and students during community forums. Now, I want to start by saying, we recognize that this preliminary presentation does not answer every question about reopening, and we're looking forward to the committee's feedback. We'll have more details next week, prior to action by the committee, and even more will be provided, leading up to the first day of school. Across my many conversations with families and staff, it's clear that families want to have choices when it comes to how we return to school in September. With this in mind, if the local health data continues to move in the right direction, and it remains safe for our students to be on campus, we are prepared to offer families an option of either a full-time in-person or full-time remote learning experience to start the school year. Essentially, this presentation includes what you heard from the hybrid group of cohorts A and D of the hybrid option. Mr. Skinner, who led the hybrid task force, he and I had a couple of conversations very early on, because we were trying to define, what do we mean by hybrid? Now, we've started with different definitions of hybrid. But here, you may hear hybrid, and we're talking about full-time on-campus or full-time remote, which we believe we can operationalize over the next several weeks. While the every-other-week, two-days-a-week, flip-flopping cohorts that are gaining traction with other communities at the moment appear really attractive on paper, and I believe our task force did an incredible job, better than even those other communities, in contemplating that scenario. That scenario, that alternating scenario, is wrought with unique challenges in operationalizing it. And it's important to keep in mind that that BC cohort model represents a blended learning environment, and would require essentially standing up a third full-school model in addition to virtual and in-person, it's not just a merging of the two. Indeed, you may have noticed that some communities that previously announced those plans are now shifting, realizing the feasibility concerns. Just a couple of hours ago, I received a message from another superintendent, a colleague superintendent, who said, "We're shifting more in the direction of what you've been discussing, can you share with me how you've been proceeding?" And I believe identifying the pitfalls of translating theory to practice is where we are perhaps ahead of others, as our task force that you just heard from was set up and fully functional nearly two months before the state required it. Now, it's also important to note that COVID-19 remains a concern here in Massachusetts. But whereas this state was once a hotspot of this virus, right now, the state is in better shape than much of the country, as we have taken serious steps to mitigate the spread. Physically returning to school means we will continue to follow the strictest health guidelines, wearing masks, socially distancing, and keeping our buildings sanitized, as Dr. McLaughlin so clearly spelled out. We can't, and we won't, cut corners when it comes to the health of our students, staff, or community. I spoke with our principals earlier, and sometimes we talk about our teachers and our students. Our commitment is also to you, principals, that you will be safe in serving our young people in our buildings. We will also have to limit interactions, one group of students with another, while we also maintain six feet, not three feet, of social distancing at all times. A lot will be different from the in-person experiences students are used to. And while the current data suggests we can safely return to the classroom and halls of our building, we know that not every family feels comfortable sending their child back to school right now. So in addition to being able to physically return to our school buildings, we are going to also offer a full remote learning option. we are going to also offer a full, remote learning option to our students. And this iteration, again, as Dr. McLaughlin so well explained, will look different than what we saw in the spring. The district has purchased enough devices that every student will receive one this coming school year. There will be a consistent technological platform for each grade level and required attendance, as well as greater feedback for students through a more typical grading scale will occur. Developing these two options for families and coming to a conclusion of what would be possible for our students in September wasn't an easy process. We know nothing can take place, take the place of the daily interactions that our families are used to and that our teachers are used to. But these in-person interactions can only happen if it's safe to return to our schools. We were all hopeful that this pandemic would be in the rearview mirror by this time, but unfortunately, that is clearly not the case. Providing options to families of in-person or remote learning is backed by the health data and a recommendation that comes after a thoughtful and extensive planning process. Despite the challenges and uncertainties that remain in front of us, I'm confident that 2020, 2021 will be a great school year for each and every one of our more than 14,500 students. With that, I'm going to turn the microphone over to Dr. Gillory, and we look forward to the committee's feedback. But important to note here, my recommendation tonight is to simply accept this as a report of progress. It's going to be important for us to hear the committee's feedback and that we can apply your suggestions so that we can bring it back to you for formal action next week in advance of DESI's deadline. Formal action with formal details as well as policy recommendations so we can release it to our families to provide them assurance of what lies ahead in September. Dr. Gillory?
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. So for our school reopening, uh, plan, as Dr. McLaughlin, uh, talked about, this is setting us up for, uh, step two of the DESI submission requirements. So tomorrow, you've already approved, um, part one of that. Now we're entering part two, which must be submitted by August tenth. The table of contents or the experience that we're going to walk you through tonight, um, is, uh, what we are currently thinking as, uh, processes by which we maximize options for families, where we look at remote learning, uh, as an option for all students. In-person learning also is an option for our students. What are, what, what are, what will be our on-campus COVID protocols? Because we know we're going to have experiences with that. What training and supports are required of staff? And then we are taking a look at our equity impact analysis. We want to make sure that we are looking through that lens. So, um, registration for remote learning, our virtual daycare thinking, transportation, building in space, uh, COVID protocols, the school calendar, as well as, uh, the equity analysis. So as we've shared with you, Dr. Boyd just took you through. I won't repeat it all, but we're leveraging the best thinking of our task force recommendations. You heard the numbers around the feedback. Our families have clearly articulated that they need choices. Um, we've discussed, um, Dr. Boyd's just discussed in-person and remote learning full-time as our options. Adhering to the strictest health guidelines is paramount in this. We won't be able to eliminate risk, but how do we mitigate them with safety being our number-one priority? With that, we will begin our analysis or sharing out our thinking around how do we maximize options for families.
So, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, um, parents will have the opportunity to indicate their choice um, of in-person or remote learning um, and determine what best meets their family's needs. Um, this may be different within one family, where maybe, you know, one child, um, might be better suited for online, remote learning, and another in-person. Um, but families will indicate their choice. Um, and once in-school learning capacity numbers have been identified um, and determined, that's when the Family Resource Center would begin the process of assigning students based on a family's request. However, um, if the demand for in-person schooling exceeds the number of available seats, um, we would then have to put a lottery into place. Um, we will have to revise our placement and transfer policies um, to accommodate for this upcoming year, which is different from any year we've experienced. And so as part of the lottery, if a lottery has to take place, we have different considerations, different priorities that we could assign, um, for in-person seats. Um, so students with individualized education plans and also students with, um, 504s that are tied to transportation would, um, you know, obviously be the first ones to have this opportunity, um, for in-person. And then, um, students identified from McKinney-Vento Services um, also have extended rights, um, per the law. Um, we also recognize that our English learners, um, depending on their level of language acquisition, may need, um, a priority to be in-person for learning. And then, um, there are other considerations that we'll propose to you if, if we, um, you know, as we develop a, a policy. Um, so one would be looking at students of essential workers, and we'd have to define that definition, um, not only taking the state's definition, but also taking into consideration, um, our school personnel as essential workers. Um, we can also look at students in entry grades of, of the school buildings, you know, the levels. So elementary, um, we could look at K-1, 2, um, fifth grade, ninth grade, right? So this would be the first time that a student would be entering into a new level, and that could be an opportunity for being acquainted and, and understanding, um, that, that new level they haven't been a part of yet, and that'll help to ensure their success in future years, um, in that setting. Um, we can also consider students of families experiencing economic hardship or socioeconomic challenges. That gets a little tricky, so we'd have to think about how do we, um, you know, what documentation do we have to determine um, who might, um, be experiencing economic challenges? And one that's not here that I also want to mention um, that could be a priority, um, is when there are siblings or multiple children in a household, and whether the family felt that, um, having some students in-person and some, um, you know, remote would make more sense. So these are potential priorities that we could set. We would bring these to you, um, in a policy, but we also welcome your, your feedback around this.
The next slide discusses the full, remote learning options that we would like to provide families. Uh, we look, we are looking to the Department of Elementary and Secondary for their recommendations, uh, for virtual school programming. Uh, the department released a request for proposal, uh, a few weeks ago, and we should be hearing the vendors that they are supporting, uh, by the end of this week or early next week. We would like to be able to provide an, an online environment for five to 12 that provides flexible learning solutions for our families and our students based on the, uh, virtual school vendor that the Department of Ed is recommending. Grades pre-K to four, we would like to provide online solutions that are designed in-house, that meet the needs, the unique learning needs of students in, uh, the pre-K to four category. Because we do know that our students, um, have unique needs that, um, may not be met by an online vendor. So, um, that's the proposal that we're making. We know based on our current survey data, also our community forums and emails that we've received from families, that we expect to see approximately 30% of our families uh, looking to select an online option. Uh, when we look at 35%, uh, 30% of grades five to 12, we're estimating approximately 3,500 students that would opt into an online school environment. So our next steps are to, um, once we, uh, see who is being endorsed as a virtual provider by the Department of Ed, uh, we need to start to identify staffing models, develop an enrollment process, um, create a handbook for our families and our students that outline specifically our expectations for, uh, work, our grading, attendance, and participation requirements and policies. We also need to develop evaluation metrics, matrix. Uh, we need to develop orientation and training modules for students and families, uh, professional development for virtual instruction, how we're going to monitor our students' work, how we're going to develop synchronous learning opportunities and provide interventions to ensure that we have consistency for student outcomes and success. And also develop our, um, processes for, and our protocols for teacher-assisted teams, uh, 504, meeting 504 plans, and also, um, meeting the needs of our individual education plans for our students. So those are our next, our next steps in, uh, planning for our online school.
Um, so once each school's capacity's been assessed and students have, um, been assigned, there may be more students wanting in-person than is available. And so, um, we are exploring partnerships with youth organizations or childcare, um, providers who may have space and staffing capacity to provide remote learning options and supervision within a daycare set, setting. So again, this is exploratory, um, but we're trying to be creative in, in meeting families' needs.
Committee members, you've seen this slide before, but, um, as you know, there are logistical issues with transportation. Due to the current environment, we anticipate, uh, being able to transport a lot fewer, uh, children per bus. However, we're looking at options to increase that number still.
And similar to school enrollment, um, once transportation capacity numbers have been determined, um, if the demand for transportation um, exceeds the number of seats available, um, we would need to implement a lottery to determine those seats. And we'd again be looking at different, um, priorities and weights um, within this lottery. Um, our students with IAPs, um, our students with 504s that are tied to transportation would, um, would have those first options for available transportation. Um, McKinney-Vento, um, families who are enrolled in the McKinney-Vento program, which is our, our homeless services, um, would also have options per the law for transportation. Um, again, we had prioritized English learners in the enrollment process being in, um, being in-person. So again, transportation would kind of follow that prioritization. Um, what is different here is that we also can consider, um, our Renaissance schools, our students attending Renaissance schools within, um, you know, the priorities, um, in ensuring stability within those, those school buildings. Um, so again, these are some, some weight considerations. Um, if we have to run a lottery, which would probably be likely?
In regards to the buildings, we continue, uh, to collaborate with the city. They've been extremely helpful in helping us look at different issues and solve, uh, different problems. I'd like, also like to point out that the budget, uh, that's in front of you, um, contemplates the committee allocating up to a half million dollars for air quality, uh, so that'll be part of the budget later that the committee has already, I believe, stated as a priority within its budget.
So as we shared, we anticipate, um, um, supporting our families, faculty, and staff through, um, this experience that we are all, uh, going through. Uh, but making sure, how do we best communicate, um, put information and resources out for families? So what, uh, what would entail our COVID protocols? Uh, we're working with, uh, City Health Department as well as our task force has come up with some great recommendations around how do we, um, what do we need to do? As well as how do we communicate out? So families, our students, faculty, staff that are experiencing symptoms, we're all saying, "Stay home." Uh, we need to, um, uh, be mindful of the, um, respite days, the 10 days or the 14 days, depending on where you are. Certainly having protocols within our HR department that handle that, but also, uh, for our students to understand what the expectations are there. Uh, but then we, uh, Dr., you heard Dr. McLaughlin talk through the isolation room for a student that may begin experiencing symptoms at school. So all of those protocols will need to be in place. Um, so again, there's a, a wide range that the, that DESI or the Department of Ed has shared out, and we want to make sure that we incorporate and be responsive to those needs as well.
Included within the presentation is the, uh, school calendar um, with the latest, um, information from Commissioner Riley at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is that students can, um, attend school for 170 days this year with a start date no later than September 16th. So this was, this is a revision to the calendar that was approved by the school committee last spring with the, um, first day of school for grades one to 12 being September 16, 2020. Uh, what you will see here, which is different, is the staff return date is the same, August 31st. Uh, we no longer need to have schools closed for the election day of September 1st, uh, since students won't be in the building. So that allows for staff professional development to begin on August 31st and, um, happen for 10 days before the September 16th start date for students. Uh, the other thing that I want to draw your attention to is on the next slide, you will see that the end date has changed. The 170th school day has been, um, backed to Tuesday, June 15th. It was originally Thursday, June 17th. But because, uh, there were only eight school days, uh, there, there was no school for the election day, um, which was, uh, September 1st. School didn't actually start until September 2nd on the original calendar. Uh, and, and there was no school for, um, the, the Friday before Labor Day, September 4th, and there was no school Labor Day, September 7th. So we only cut back eight days to start school on the, the required September 16th. So, um, that required us to take two days off the end of the calendar. So if we, the 170th school day is now June 15th, and, um, if, if we included the five snow days, uh, the 175th day would be June 22nd, not June 24th, which would have been the 181st day in the original calendar that was approved.
One update here, and, uh, again, more details about what professional development will look like. We'll shape that out once we know the committee's desired direction for how we open schools. But this allows those days to be built in. You'll notice on your agenda coming up is an opportunity to vote on a revised calendar. Here is just suggesting to you that our recommendation is going to be to take advantage of the flexibility offered by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to revise our calendar. Uh, if you recall from the last time we approved our calendar, it's a collaboration with UTL. UTL has, uh, requested that we continue to keep with the one day that's typically there prior to school starting and actually make for 11 days, which would adjust our first day for students to the September 17th. As Ms. Desmond stated, right now, September 16th is the latest allowable start date by the state. We have and will submit a waiver request, and you'll notice that, uh, with our recommendation when we get to that item, it'll include the collaborative effort with UTL for a first day of school for the 17th. This is showing you currently what's allowable by state guidance. The 17th requires a waiver. 16th right now is the latest possible date allowed by the state. Uh, 17th has been in collaboration with UTL. But I'll hold that conversation till we get to that item for approval later in the agenda.
All right, one, one quick question. I didn't want to, I wanted them to get through the slides, and then we'll get into questions. But one quick question was, um, did we approve and can we approve? Like, I thought we were going to eliminate snow days by doing virtual days. Is that something we had to get approved by DESI? Or is that something we could do as a community?
I'm not aware of the need to gain a waiver there. I would still, but I'm still under the belief that the calendar is the purview of the committee. We do have a waiver and exception process that I can apply for. We're waiting for the committee's decision to submit that, but that's right now on the top of the inbox for Ms. Desmond. She'll fill that out with the waiver request as far as the committee's decision is right now. Uh, so I, I, I think anything's available to the committee. We'll submit that through for DESI. think anything's available to the committee, we'll submit that through for DESI, anything that requires approval from them.
All right. Cause I was thinking, it's a good way to eliminate snow days, right? We have an assignment that day and everybody participates and it's counted as a school day. Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I absolutely, I mean, this is one tiny part of a great big thing, but since we're talking about it. I, I absolutely agree. Cause I think what we could do is use those, if we can eliminate those five days on the calendar, recognizing that we're going to have to adhere to hopefully the 17th, but maybe the 16th. If you, we could use those days to expand our professional development through the year so that we could have check-ins on a regular basis to whatever model we go with. There's going to need to be ongoing professional development, ongoing support for teachers, administrators, you know, every one of our staff people. If we could anticipate that now and build in that time, taking better advantage of those five snow days. I mean, I think that would be, you know, the, again, one of the few benefits has, has come out of this is the idea that remote learning is a, will be a real thing and that snow days basically will no longer exist. So I think that's a, a great catch. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Mr. Dakota's idea.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have a question about waiting on the DESI's response for which programs would be acceptable for the remote. Don't they already have one approved with the Greenfield School?
The, it's, so we haven't received final confirmation. The Greenfield School is one of their statewide virtual charters.
Yes.
The program in use by the Greenfield is one of the programs that we likely expect to see as an option. That's the Florida Virtual School. So if you see the Florida Virtual School language, that is the platform that the Greenfield School uses.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Darney?
So I have questions on a number of slides, but I want to just piggyback on what Mr. Dakota said. In terms of outside vendors that DESI might recommend, I'm hearing mixed reactions about the quality of some of these vendors. And I don't know if Ms. Desmond has thought about this or if you've discussed it, you know, as a group. What if the DESI recommended vendors are really not appropriate for us? I mean, I think we understand and we're going to be preparing for the younger ones, that we know best how to teach our kids, right? That if, has there been some thought, if the DESI recommended vendors are not really appropriate, what, what would be a plan B for that?
A lot of the work that we're going to be doing is going to be about adapting the work. Building out a full learning management system, however, might be something that the district might consider buying versus building, then taking what we buy and then adapting it. At the elementary school level, remember, it's, it's quite a bit different because our students in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, it's a scripted course of study essentially. When you're in first grade, you're getting the first grade standards. Ninth grade and having been a secondary person, ninth grade follows almost like a middle school model. Every kid needs every credit. You have your ninth grade entry of study. By the time youngsters move to 10th, 11th, 12th, these are individualized courses of study. So you may have an option to be very scripted in ninth grade. You never, you don't have that option even in 10th, 11th and 12th. So the amount of courses of study that we offer at the high school level nears the hundreds. I'm going to assume in a high school our size without having the curriculum guide in front of me, but I'm looking at Libby behind you as she's nodding her head in agreement, hundreds. So it starts to become a vastly different endeavor at the secondary level. So what we probably and likely will recommend is that we both buy and build.
Okay.
And that we buy a platform and then adapt it. Whereas the elementary K through four, you'll see is a within school program, certain virtual classrooms that we can tailor within the school. The secondary school five through 12, a virtual school model that we can adapt a platform to be something that works for Lowell.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Let's, let's just get through the last two slides. Actually, people want to see our faces when we're talking and they're just looking at the screen. So why don't we get through the last two slides and then we'll start talking?
Sure. So we have a tool that, that we use to analyze our planning. And this is some notes from that tool. So first, we look at the proposal impact. And we wanted to present a plan for reopening that follows safety and health guidelines while providing a high quality education for all students. We looked at whether it was aligned with the strategic plan and we had identified four areas to prioritize: physical health, mental wellness, fiscal prudence and flexibility. So you should see that throughout the plan that we, we are presenting. Analysis of data. So spring remote learning observational data, learning data from what took place in the spring. Summer program observational data, the family survey, community forums and targeted listening sessions, and then school enrollment data. Stakeholder engagement. So the task forces were intentionally created with varying stakeholder groups. Then we also held targeted sessions with our English learner, parent advisory, our special education parent advisory. We held general community sessions. We also held one in Spanish and then also provided KMAI and Portuguese interpretation support at one of our community sessions. And then our McKinny Vento specialists also conducted surveys via phone and conversations with families who are living in doubled up situations, as well as reached out to shelter workers to help gather input from, from families who, who are living in shelters. We do have families under the McKinny Vento umbrella that will need additional outreach, families living in hotels, as well as families in unsheltered situations. That population gets much smaller. Our largest population are families living in a doubled up situation and then shelters. And so, in looking at how, we looked at how schools might be impacted by different enrollment scenarios. We looked at our assignment policies and tried to make sure we were prioritizing our families, our students who might have the greatest need. The budget is uncertain. However, we've, we've tried to maintain, you know, the level funded scenario and maintain a prioritization of funding to schools and school budgets approved through the school site council process. And accountability and communication. So the communication is going to be critical when the plan gets finalized in making sure families know their, their options, the implications of their option, that they understand the, the process for, for transferring. A lot of our questions were coming from families around if I choose one option, am I stuck? How do I go in between different options? So that's something that we know will be critical for families in the next few weeks. And then once the school year begins, ensuring that families are getting at least monthly communications in that first month, maybe even weekly communications around how things are, you know, how the plan is, is rolled out, how it's working. And then, you know, our bilingual family liaisons and McKinny Vento specialists are planning sessions and outreach to our families that don't speak English and our families who are experiencing homelessness to make sure that we're taking extra efforts to ensure that they understand the options and understand any rights and opportunities within the school reopening plan.
Just wanted a point of recognition. I just noticed we have Steve and Rob up in the, I'm not sure, what do we call that? They're a part of our secondary school with Libby. The high schools also had task forces that were doing work. So I just, point of privilege to recognize their work.
Up in the upper gallery.
The upper gallery? All right.
All right. So why don't we, if we're back to the faces instead of getting the, and get the.
Dan, is there a way that we can knock this off the screen?
Yeah. The slideshow. I don't think that's LTC though, but. So who wants to go, do we want to get into questions then, Ms. Superintendent?
Yeah, have that focus on them. No?
I think it's different from LTC, so.
All right. He'll try, he'll work to knock it off.
All right. So why don't we start with questions? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on that last page, speaking of budget, is there any, this is to Ms. Turner, is there any word from anywhere about numbers coming forth from Boston or anywhere, actually?
Senator Kennedy wanted, they sent out an email. They sent out an email saying that the House and Senate will be releasing a three-month budget with unrestricted local aid would be level funded and chapter 70 would be low, um, level funded with a pos, um, with inflation. It was $107 million increase statewide. So we're looking at least, even though it's a three-month period, they're going to give us a level funding budget plus inflation. But it, we don't have anything in writing yet. So that's just, so far, that's just, you know, the rumor mill and, but it came from Senator Kennedy's office. So we're, we're very hopeful that this is going to.
Yes, we can all keep our fingers crossed on that one, right?
Exactly.
I can also add, the city manager has received that same information as have the other superintendents. So, that I checked with. So everybody's receiving that same information. I'm hopeful that Ms. Turner, as she does, receives that information really quickly in writing. Once she receives it in writing, then you'll see it processed through your numbers that you receive. She's been checking hourly to try to make sure we can get that confirmed. Three months is better than one month.
Okay. So do we have questions on the reopening? Ms. Darney?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to, and we don't have to put it up there, but the transportation slides. And obviously, it's a complicated issue and it's really going to depend on what the final numbers look like. And I think really the devil is in the details in terms of convincing our families, if they do qualify for the in-school full piece, that it's going to be safe. And, and, and our staff, the people are going to feel safe. But in terms of the transportation piece, are we looking at the impacts that that will have to the charter of parochial schools? And when will we be communicating that with them?
Yeah. Dr. Hall?
We've relayed that preliminarily. Mr. Dakota has talked to the charter schools that we've had some busing challenges, but we don't have anything finalized, Ms. Darney, to obviously tell them yet. And we need the committee's guidance on what the tolerance is for the amount of children on a bus as well.
And actually, that was the other question I had. In the slide, you mentioned that 13 per bus. I mean, we could do, we're looking at the viability of doing 26 on a bus, is that correct? If we put in the shields and things like that?
Yes, if we can put in shields or curtains or any of that. I'm, I'm not sure if that's going to be allowed by the state, but we certainly would do what we could to maximize the amount that could be safely transported.
So that number 13 is not hard and fast per bus?
I think that would be like the worst case scenario.
Okay.
Or the, the outlier scenario, I guess is a better word.
Okay, thank you.
Can I pause the committee, Mr. Mayor, and can I ask for a point of privilege? Cause I'm looking dead in the eyes of Mr. Stahl here. And I'm going to do you a favor here, man. So if the committee has questions for the principals, Mr. Mayor, is it possible that we allow them the privilege of heading out if the, after questions and maybe put their questions to the front? I don't know if that's okay with the committee.
Are there any questions for the principals? Mr. Howie?
No, but, excuse me. I do have a few questions, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. All right. But if nobody has any questions for the principals, we'll just let them go.
They might want to stay for a minute and have an opinion on what I'm going to say.
If you want to stay and listen, you can. Thank you for coming in.
But since we were talking about transportation first, I just think we should look into changing the mileage. I've seen Chansford, I know we're not Chansford, but they went to two miles. I know our miles are different than them on how far a kid is away from the school. But my big concern is professional development. I've had plenty in my career and a lot of times it's not meaningful. And 10 days to me would be like torture to be in it that long. I would like to know if the staff is going to be doing it remotely or in a school. I also, when Dr. McLaughlin brought up the word cohorts, I, I think it's important to put your pre-K, the fourth grade people, all in one professional development. So they're not in with music teachers, phys ed teachers and English language learners. I just think it's more productive. In 10 days is quite a long time. Five or most, and I'm not, I'm not an educator, but after five days of professional development, you want out of there. And we might be able to save five days if we don't do 10 right off the bat for another time, like in November. But that's how I feel about professional development. It's one of the most important things, I think, sitting in front of us right now. And the last thing I want to say about it is, when I see teachers are told that they're going to have race training, that bothers me. Because to me, that occupation, teachers, they're the best people on the planet. I mean, do a prison, does a prison guard need race training? Yes. The policeman need it? Yes. Teachers? I'm just not sure about race training. And I'm just throwing out a few of my opinions. Last thing, Mayor, is the air purifiers, the cost of them. We have two weeks to come up with how we're going to pay for it. That's where I think you should talk to the city. I think they should be responsible for that. And the last thing I want to say is, when Paul George spoke, I knew what he was going to say tonight. I sat on the facility subcommittee with Bob Gignac and Steve Gendron and yourself, Rita Mercia and Bill Samaras. And we opened that can of worms with the help of my colleague, Ms. Darney. And the city has moved in a great, great direction. The city manager, the first female city manager in the state of Massachusetts, has got a ton of money coming this way to fix our air conditioning, fix our roofs and maintenance of our schools. And it's nobody's fault here, how we haven't kept maintenance up on the schools in the year. But the last thing I want to say is, when I was in a union, there was half of us that didn't like our union and half of them that loved the union. And I think our staff, the ones, and I've, I've called a lot of teachers and the majority that I've called, I didn't have one that told me they didn't want to go back to work. So I just wanted to say that. And thank you for your time. But I already know the pros and the task, task force, what they've done. I'm excited to have these people sitting behind me. You know, one person said to me out front before we got in here, we need the whole 10 days. Well, I still question that if we should have 10 days unless it's all meaningful. If it is, I'm for it. But I don't believe professional development can go 10 days, especially if they're in school doing it remotely. They might be a little bit happier. But being in school for 10 days and if it's not meaningful, it is torture. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon, then Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. First, I just wanted to say, I think the track that we're on is an excellent one. I think it really emphasizes parent choice and it gives parents a choice sort of on both ends, no matter how they feel about a return to school. For the teachers, I think focusing on one style of teaching is a huge deal. And we didn't spend too much time emphasizing that, but that is a big deal. Being able to focus on either in-person or online teaching methods is, that's, that's a big deal for our staff. Also had the air purifiers. Mr. Howie, I'm glad you brought it up because that's just another expense incurred by the school department that the city should have, should have been throwing millions of dollars at for the last 20 years or plus. So I would have a hard time trying to find that money in our budget when, long-term neglect by the city is, is what's causing that. And now that's half a million dollars we're going to have to try to come up with. As much as I think it would be valid, a valid payment. That's city fund, that needs to be city funds. I, I agree pretty strongly on that. And then I guess clarification, are gymnasiums going to be completely unusable for physical activity?
No, not completely unusable. You can think back to some of the activities aren't going to be possible. It'll look very different. One of the things you'll notice is we didn't put up the building capacity, because last time it, we're going through exercises with building capacity. And part of the, the next decision, which you heard Ms. Phillips say, we had to get to specifics in order to open up how much space is there. And both of the points that you bring up relate to that. One, the air quality matters. It could go down. Two, what's the building schedule and how are spaces used? So for some schools, the gymnasium may also be used as a classroom space when it's available. But we're going to expect right now to have physical education. You just won't be able to do the types of activities that can't be socially distanced. We won't be able to do the types of activities where you have to share stuff. And that limits a lot of the activities we typically do. a lot of the activities we typically do. Um, and to start the year, of course, phys, gym, uh, PE lends itself well to being something that you do outside, which we're going to be encouraging outdoor space. Um, but right now, we're, we didn't count gymnasiums as something that could be used as classroom space. I do have significant concerns with how we utilize little high schools gymnasium and how we're going to be able to make that one work, but, uh, nonetheless, no, we're not giving a blanket statement on gymnasiums. It's going to have to include our principals and our PE teachers to have that.
I, I think that was, I mean, it was in, um, talk about use of facilities outside of school time, so I, I, I understand that might be a different scenario. Um, I, speaking of professional development, I would love to get started a small group game professional development for our PE staff, uh, because, you know, that really actually is the way that PE has gone, playing smaller games, more activity time, uh, and so it lends itself to, you know, less contact, uh, contact with less kids and, uh, let's go, uh, you know, I can run it if you want. If you want me to lead a P, uh, a professional development day, I, I would certainly offer to do that. We'll figure it out.
Well, I think you're next, you're next up on the Mc Avenue jump rope contest, I do believe, Mr. Dillon.
I still have that outstanding, you're right. I'll get on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dakota, and then Ms. Clark, and then Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to, to answer your question, Mr. Howie, about the professional development, I, I would posit that they could use fifteen to twenty days of professional development because they were still so lacking with any of the tools that they really needed from March through the rest of the school year. We need to provide our staff with the tools that they're going to need, and that's not going to happen over five days, trust me. As a, as a retired educator of thirty-five-plus years, I, I think, I speak from experience on that. Uh, I also believe that, uh, those extra days will give the city and our custodians more time to get those buildings prepared for our kids and our staff. Safety has got to be the, the absolute top of the list. It can't not, it, it can't be ignored. Uh, it, I mean, back in the day, I mean, we could say, uh, you know, a, a wink and a smile would, would be, okay, yeah, we're going to take care of that. Yeah, with, that'll, that'll happen. Well, yeah, now it has to. It's not, it may be a question of if, it has to. So that, that needs to be, uh, kind of put at the forefront. Uh, getting back to the need on transportation, uh, I have a couple of questions on that one. Uh, the two pictures of the, uh, buses that you have on that transportation page, uh, page eleven, um, one has twelve students and the other has twenty-four listed, and, and the two, the two pictures look identical, so I don't know what the difference is in seating, I, I, I question that, but that's okay.
Can I, can I offer? We don't have a graphic designer on duty, so we did our best, uh, pirate as many meaningful graphics as we could.
See, okay.
Uh, and then adapt them accordingly.
Just curious, I'm looking at the.
They are great graphics.
Am I missing what?
We didn't.
I kept counting it over and over, it came to the same number, anyway. But, uh, but getting back to that, if we end up with, uh, more, uh, students that need busing and so forth, uh, is that, would it be cheaper for us to pay for an Uber, you know, uh, I don't know, honestly.
Um, you bring up a good point that I think will relate to a lot of questions. You know, we refer to, uh, community forums that we've held, we've done polling, we refer to, uh, survey data. At the point of decision, that data becomes irrelevant. People are, are giving best reaction with information they've got. The more information we provide as the pandemic moves, so as we learn decisions they're going to make, we may exceed need, we may have more space, we're going to try to do our very best to meet with families, to talk with families, our principals, our teachers, everybody's going to be working with our families to help them understand, the more we can mitigate ri- risk, the better our community will be, and I'll, there's, the school buses raise a serious concern. It was the number-one issue, if you recall, when the governor made the decision to close schools for the remainder of the year before going to the stay-at-home orders. I believe his quote was, "We simply don't know how we're going to make transportation work." And I think here, when you're looking at the slide with even the graphic that we pulled from the best source, you can see some of that. So the best way that we can mitigate risk would be to reduce ridership. Now, the question is, we have, I shouldn't say the question, we have a lot of families that already transport. Approximately fifty percent of our families don't opt into transportation, and any one of our principals will share with you, many of the families that opt into transportation aren't using it a hundred percent of the time. Our cu- uh, car service within our community, uh, is uncommon compared to most urban communities. So there is a question, how many families are truly going to be opting into bus service once we start to inform them of what this looks like? Uh, one example, I'll share with you about how decisions change. I did a forum, uh, with our high school students, and approximately fifty of our high school students came online. And I could tell by the questions they were asking, and you've seen these Zoom forums that we do, use the chat room and you get the questions, you could tell by the questions that they were asking that nearly a hundred percent of them were planning to be in-person for next year if we offered it out. And then when I started to share, that in-person's not going to look like what they experienced. There's not going to be cafeteria like they knew. There's not going to be the hallway interaction that they had experienced. They're going to need to be six feet apart. It's not going to be these type of PE activities and the gymnasium that they had experienced. And also, if they're remote, they'll have access to the extracurriculars and sports and all of that stuff as well. Then the question started to shift as they got more information, and then I started to hear, well, what does remote look like? Uh, what's that going to look like? And I think the more information we can provide, all of this data that we're using with surveys, that too will shift. What you know, and I think what we should take as fact, we have large populations of people that, no matter what we provide, in-person's not going to be an option for them. And we also have a large segment of our population for whom in-person's a necessity for them. Uh, when we start to go beyond that generalizing, once we get into information, it could shift, and I think transportation's going to be a big one. I don't know how many families are going to feel safe on a bus. There are going to be families that are, need our buses, and we don't have that good data yet. We start educating and informing, um, families, we'll start to get better data, but you're not going to have as many seats on buses as you have in classrooms, so there is going to be a, a difference there, um, unless you go to some kind of other alternate staggered, and Dr. Hall's, he's researching all of that. Every day, he comes with something else that he thinks he can analyze for us.
So the last thing, I, a couple of last things, actually. I'm going to follow Mr. Howie's lead on three last things, uh, but, the.
I'll be back. I'm second, I'll be back.
The, uh, the page on operations on, uh, talking about meals in the rooms, I, I'm hoping that, uh, that we're aware that, that will also in, increase the amount of money that has to be allocated for, uh, pest control, because that is always an issue when you eat in the classrooms and have food in the classroom, so that's going to have to be another one. And I do direct one of my questions to the principals, if more parents are driving their kids to school, will that increase the danger of, of the drop-offs at my, some of your schools? And I, I know that sometimes traffic can get really hairy in some of, some of the school buildings, depending on what kind of, of a drive-off you have. So, I mean, these are other issues, side issues that you may be not, parents aren't thinking about, but necessarily, we do, we have to be thinking about that. So, look, that, those are my last comments. Thank you.
Would any principal like to take a jump on the kiss and drop and the drop-off zones and what that looks like with increased traffic and how we could prepare? Dr. McLaughlin?
Actually, uh, it's like, it's like I paid Judith for the segue here. Um, traffic is actually one of the, um, one of the pieces that the groups all looked at, so that, that is in all of our reports that they have access to. We have to have a way to stagger arrival and dismissal anyway. So, yes, some schools are already, I'm at the Maury. The Maury is a, we hold up the entire neighborhood every morning anyway. So, um, the schools will if people are transporting, but on the opposite end, I think that will make it easier to keep children six feet apart upon entering the building, because they will be remaining in a car until they are getting out and going in. So things that may be a challenge may actually keep children safer in the long run, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, Mr. Anderson's behind you. He had a, all these great activities that families would do on arrival. One of my favorite was your selfies with kids. We can't do the selfie booth anymore, so I'm, I'm thinking you're going to come up with something great. I just don't know what it is yet. That'll be, maybe you'll get a fifteen-foot selfie rod somehow, or?
Brainstorming already.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Thank you. Um, so first, I just want to say thank you so much to the folks that are here, uh, who participated in these task forces, and then all the folks in our community members who participated, um, in just developing this. I think it was very thorough, um, in conversations with other families, you know, in different, um, towns and cities. I really did feel very comfortable with the work that was happening here and the updates. Um, so, well done. Um, I really loved the phrases, some of the phrases that you used, Dr. McLaughlin, in terms of creating connection where we can, because, uh, I think that's one of the pieces that we all know that our students are really missing, I think we're all missing right now. Um, so I appreciate that that is a motivation, but also, you know, staying safe and that we're, you know, even the idea of using and infusing technology into the classroom to both teach students how to, you know, learn and use the tools that we need them to know how to use, and then collaborate with one another, um, as well as social emo- emotional being prioritized as a, as a fundamental key to every day. Um, I really do believe, I think we all have talked a lot about that and how important it's going to be. So I say, bring on yoga for physical education. Uh, that is a socially distant way to, uh, be active and, um, can also help with that social-emotional space. Um, a few other comments and then a question. I think that our community really came together during this pandemic. We saw it a lot through some of the organizations that even came into fruition when the pandemic hit. I, I'm thinking specifically of Lama, um, and there, I know there are others that I'm not mentioning, but I do wonder if there would be opportunity as we're realizing there's going to be some issues with regard to transportation, where our community might come together to have ways that we identify car pools or rides for students that are traveling from similar spaces, uh, or places in the city to similar schools. I'm not saying that's something we have to coordinate as a school, but I think that our community could be creative with that. I think that, um, that would be something that some of our community members would be wanting and willing to do. Um, yes, to professional development, I'm a big believer in that. We approved it at the last meeting. I think there's a lot of spaces, but certainly with the tools that we are looking for our staff to be using, how important it will be to give them the, the tools that they need to use, um, I mean, the, the lessons they need to use those tools. Um, so my questions are related to, this is a small one I'm going to start with, but at the very end, Ms. Phillips mentioned the, um, well, we did talk about communication with families, and, uh, I know that the S-MOR tool was, was obtained, we have licenses for every school. I'm wondering, um, that's a way for newsletters, right, to be provided to all of our families and then tra, with the translation? Can that be something that we start to incorporate into our communication methods? I, I believe it's at the school level, so, um, but it would be nice to even start making use of that as a common way for families to be receiving information. I'm wondering if that's a possibility.
Ms. Phillips?
Um, so School Committee Clerk, I, I think it definitely is. That was the reason we purchased it. Um, I don't know that the schools have received the licenses yet. I think it was right about the time of, of school closure, um, but I will put that on the list to, to make sure that we share those licenses out and, um, you know, see if that can, can be utilized.
Right, because I am a big believer in it, and it was nice to see, I see it incorporated here, so I'm excited that, that it is a focus to really have a way for our families to know how and when and where to be looking for information, so a consistent platform back and forth, um, you know, between the school and the family and, um, you know, whether that's teachers or administrative information. Um, the other question goes back to the registration and enrollment. I mean, so while we're not calling this our hybrid model, it really is a hybrid in many forms, because we are giving our families a choice, and, um, I believe there are a number of families that are going to be very happy with these options. That being said, does it also mean when families might, when we maybe open this up, where families have to identify which option they're going to choose, is this really new assignments, new teacher assignments? Uh, and does that mean that then there are some teachers that are really, they're, they're teaching in-person, and then we have other teachers who are teaching virtually?
Yeah, you bring up some of the, um, what creates some of the unique challenges, you remember, I was mentioning if you start flip-flopping across. Here, what we would be doing is looking that you have an in-person program and you have a virtual program, and you have teachers that are specializing virtually, and you have teachers that are specializing in-person. Then what we can do logistically is, as a student may be forced to go virtual because of exposure perhaps, as we saw, there's all of those exposure, uh, then our principals can simply transfer them to a virtual classroom, which our in-person classrooms will have strict parameters around class sizes, but we have greater flexibility around those virtual classrooms. Then if they have a classroom that has to go virtual for some reason, they can just now add one more virtual classroom and then bring them back online. And then, as so as families are choosing, one of our important policy decisions that we're going to have to make is, what's the duration of that choice? Because when they make that choice to move, again, strict parameters around who's in person, we're not going to be making, I don't think, I can give you quite high confidence, it's not going to be a recommendation that this is a duration of a year. We're now into a place that it's, we know it's not a short duration of a day, that can't be managed. So now you're looking at probably a month or a marking period, a quarter, what makes the most sense? One, obviously, in terms of school routines is quarter, one in terms of family routines is per month, and then, yes, they are shifting teachers then, because getting back to, a lot of feedback we got from teachers that Mr. Dillon raised, specializing in one or the other would be the preferred choice. Um, and so it allows them to establish expertise, a teacher's a virtual teacher with a virtual classroom, another teacher's an in-person, in-person classroom, and kids can move across those two without the teacher having to gain different expertise.
Thank you. And one other question related to that, um, the idea that there might be these satellite virtual school daycare, uh, centers, so is that really targeted for our younger, our pre-K through, forth, or elementary learners? Is that what we're thinking?
Primarily.
Needed?
But, you know, you, I, I don't want to make a decision for a family.
Right.
And our Boys and Girls Club does an excellent job with our adolescent learners. Uh, we have some organizations that work well with our teens. I did, uh, we did a forum with our community providers as well and had that discussion, and a couple of them did raise their hand. We shared with them, Ms. Phillips and I did, that there's inevitably going to be this need, uh, and there's two possibilities here, and, uh, there was strong interest in both. One, if you remember, we said, there are some facilities that we have that are not able to meet the needs of remote learning for the space they have, but they are facilities at the disposal of the committee. That could be a partnership where we use facilities that are within your disposal that we can't use for remote, for in-person learning. Uh, you, the day school, for instance, in Chelmsford is one that we've discussed a couple of times. You may remember that came up in capacity at zero because of the expansive needs of the population on that site, but it's still a high-quality site that we actually don't have these concerns about air quality within. So is there a provider who then onsite might be able to use that facility? And then we have virtual learners and the adults are there using a facility that isn't available to use for the school population. And then also, we do have some providers that have their own facilities, but as you heard, the caller was asking about, our families utilize these for before and after-school care. Well, what are we utilizing these facilities for during school? Because now we have families that may very well be remote learners, but again, we would expect the same stringent guidelines to be followed, and now there's a space for them to go to where they could be engaged in their remote learning with supervision. Um, so I know no partner was able to, of course, on the spur of the moment, commit to that type of partnership, but there was at least interest from at least two current partners that we have, which I'll, uh, not, choose not to name at the moment to explore this conversation further, so it's a definite possibility, and, Ms. Clark, yeah, there's a definite need, I'm sure, once we go through choices.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So I'm going to just go quickly. I want to start with the professional development piece. Um, I absolutely think we need not only upfront professional development for both cohorts. If you're going to be in-person, you need to understand the protocols, the safety, you know, if you're going to be remote, you've got to be comfortable with that, the technology and all that, but also, also our families, our parents and our students. And I don't know if you want to call that professional development, but they have to understand what's their level of accountability. Now, we used to have, I don't know if they still do it, when my children were in middle school, we had a family compact, and it very clearly stated out, stated what my responsibilities were as a parent, what my, my child's responsibilities were as a student, and, and everybody had to sign it. This teacher signed it, they, we all had our roles. So I'm thinking that our families need professional development, and I don't see that in this current schedule, and I know we've got a, you know, a million balls in the air, but I do think we have to plan that in. How are we going to do that? the air, but I do think we have to plan that in. How are we going to do that? I also agree with, I think it was one of, it was brought up earlier, this idea of checking in, checking in with our families, checking in with our students, checking in with our staff. And on the staff note, I want to make a point. There was the article in the Lowell Sun where it said 30% of the teachers who participated in the survey that the UTL did, I did not see the actual survey, but 30% wanted in-school, 35% I think wanted remote. I think that we had, that choice that we're giving our families, we need to give our staff too. Where do you fall? Where do you want to be? Do you want to be a remote teacher? Do you want to be an in-school? And again, for those who choose in-school, whether it's a parent or a teacher, they have to believe that we're doing everything possible to make those buildings safe. And so, then I want to refer to the issue of the air quality. Absolutely think that this is a collaboration with the city, their buildings. We need to work together. I'm not saying in a pointing finger kind of way. And I do feel that we do have the city at the table wanting to work with us and determine how many of our buildings will be safe enough. I also think, when you talk, and you mentioned it earlier, Dr. Boyd, this idea of using outside spaces more, we need to capitalize on that. We, I think as a city, don't we own tents and awnings? We put on the Folk Festival every year for what, 27 years straight? We might already have those tents and awnings that other communities are asking to use as PPE money, investing in. We might already own those and the city could maybe let us use us. And especially the schools that were, you know, the largest schools or with, that have the land, put a big tent up. So, now maybe the kids don't have to have their lunch in their classroom that day. They can go out and eat under the tent. And I mean, obviously, it would be a shared space. The principals would have to coordinate who gets to be outside or they could do physical activity outside, under the tent, you know. I mean, I realize it's going to be winter and all that, but I think that there's some possibility to do more of what we've done with the IT. Like, you're having trouble with your device? You have those check-ins, right? Do more of that with families where they meet under the tent. And we'll help you figure out what you're not able to do with your student or the trouble they're having with the online learning or what. You know, we have to, there's so many moving parts, I realize that, but these are some areas that I think we really do deserve our attention. So, there was the, the last one is really a question. I'd like to get a better understanding of the timeline. I mean, I know we have to make a decision by August 10th for DESI, but are we actually going to know how many students can, what's our capacity? Are we going to know how many students are going to want it? That doesn't seem possible that we'll have all those facts. So, what are we going to have to decide by next week?
All right, so-
What information will we have to help us?
Yeah, these are actually, and I've had a lot of these conversations with a lot of people here locally as well as across the state because we've got to make decisions that are responsible for families so that they can plan. But obviously, of course, it takes the committee making a decision so that we can create plans. So, what we're going to have as part of your opportunity for next week, again, based on your guidance here tonight, we'll actually have the policies that you need before you for your admission, your enrollment. Those are going to be shifts in policies, I think, I might suggest are some of the most difficult decisions that a policymaking body could make. You have a scarce resource and a high-need, vulnerable population and who gets access to that is an incredibly complex and difficult decision to wrestle with. So, you'll have those policies. You'll also have within a report, essentially a report to the community as to what school opening will look like, including when parents can expect this information to come to them. Almost a stepper that says, here at this date, this information will come to you. As a parent, you should be considering X, Y, and Z. And given the heightened timeline, I'll tell you, and I think that, again, principals, if any of you have to go, I know it is exciting and all of those great things, but please, I know all of you, you have children, you have loved ones. But it's greatly emblematic of everybody throughout the system. Everybody's working 24 hours. So, no deadline's going to feel like a good deadline. So, the deadlines that we've committed to are the deadlines that are respectful and responsible for our families to make decisions. So, that stepper of what comes to families then you can expect would be the deadline by which this additional information's going to come to you. That's what you'll see with the guide almost. Then we will come out with full parent guides, student guides. We are going to be working to create snapshot vignettes of a day in the life of a student that could be in writing, video tutorials for families that they can upload. And then we will be working our darndest to connect with each of our 8,000 families, our 15,000 young ones across this community to engage them in conversations as well. If you kind of saw the presentation, when you think about policy, what you have access to for everyone becomes the default. We don't want a family to default to virtual if in fact they have a very real need for being in-person. So, vastly different than our choice system right now where you have a default school and you choose another school. Well, for some of our families, and remember, we have language populations for which we don't have staff members that speak and we don't have local media that's able to create. We have 69 different language populations. Some of these Urdu, Pashto, different languages where I can tell you, I don't have a staff member that speaks that language. So, we're going to be working diligently across, Ms. Doherty, and what's responsible and respectful for our families so they can make informed decisions is, are going to be the deadlines that we work to follow. I hope that serves well by the committee, but we are very much here in saying, there is no work too hard for us, but there's nothing we can do to create that 25th hour in a 24-hour day. And that's really what we are up against here as a community. But we're going to do it well by our students. That's our commitment. Some of that 25th hour also comes back to what I was mentioning before of some unique challenges with that AB flip-flopping that I think other communities are learning when they're starting to now shift. If I could, Mr. Mayor, I think it's important to note, this conversation of our buildings and air quality is not unique to Lowell. These are school buildings. This is not something where Lowell specifically has somehow done some type of disservice. The latest conversation here was a community that I know very well, Philadelphia. They identified 171 of their buildings across that district that just don't meet the COVID-type standard for air quality. Now, that's a, this is a conversation every community's in. It's a conversation that we're in here. This is a different standard. Nobody, if anybody on this committee or elsewhere was somehow planning for and committing resources towards a global pandemic of this type of proportion, prior to COVID-19, we would have been laughed right out of the room. If you started doing that on your campaign platform, I can't imagine that would have generated a lot of interest at the poll. So, everybody's working through this. That's not Lowell-specific. I think Mr. George raises important points, you as a committee raise important points, and it's a collaboration with the city. And I think we've got to bring that up too.
Thank you. You all said, Ms. Doherty? I just got to go around Bob and give Ms. Martin a chance. Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, obviously, it's a lot. It's a lot for all of us and I'm sure, you know, for the, for the community, it's a lot too. You know, I certainly join with my colleagues in thanking the committed professionals who are part of these task forces. And I think the work you have done has, is certainly impressive. I think we'll be digging into it deeper. I look forward to digging into it deeper. But I think what we've been given tonight certainly gives us a starting point that makes me feel much more confident about Lowell's ability to respond. So, I think that's really encouraging. I'm not surprised by that, but I'm, it's certainly, I'm sorry?
Oh.
Okay. That's really not the best approach, but anyway. So, you know, you absolutely have, you know, the collective thanks of the community for the hard work that you've done. And there are a lot of questions, I think, from, already from the committee and then, you know, kind of moving forward before next week when we need to make some final decisions. I appreciate the challenges of the hybrid, and I know we've got a lot of different hybrids, that we're using the word in a lot of different ways. But personally, I still find some compelling aspects of the kind of reduction of students in classrooms where we're able to kind of toggle between with, you know, giving all four cohorts, you know, welcoming all four cohorts as part of our process. I understand and I think it's been well articulated what the operational challenges are of that and I appreciate it. I'm not discounting it at all. Not 100% ready to give up on it. So, I think, you know, during the course of this next week, as you're looking at it, I'd appreciate it if it was something that was still in the mix because I do think that it would be a really, an incredibly responsive kind of approach for us to take. So, you know, maybe that's the Rolls-Royce standard and, you know, maybe we get to Cadillac. But, you know, still understanding that I think that is a, that ultimately for me, that's the most kind of, I don't know, perfect world model. And then, again, recognizing that's not where we live. But I'd like to keep it in the mix and I think it leads into kind of what my fundamental point would be, is that I think the one way that the city of Lowell could respond to this crisis, to our families, to the, to the boots-on-the-ground teachers and families and kids is going to live and die by our successful communication strategy. I'm a fan of newsletters. I'm a fan of, in every format, electronic, and all of it. But I honestly believe that if we wanted to build a response that was absolutely in line with what our families need and was responsive for kids, for families, for teachers, we really need to commit to a one-on-one strategy. Now, that is, I understand, incredibly intensive, but I think it could be what allows us to build a system that is truly in line with what our families need and our students need and really allow us to build something. I mean, if we are limited to the two ends of the hybrid, if we're limited to, we can only do either, you know, in-school or remote, having one-on-one conversations with families so that they're not making a knee-jerk decision. They're understanding all the ramifications of the choice they're making. I think that could be an absolute gold standard response that this, that this city could provide to our community. I have not heard of it happening anywhere else. I think it could be something that we could uniquely do here in Lowell. And I think that, again, I don't say this like it's easy because it's certainly not, but we have some additional time at the beginning. We have the capacity to bring on staff who are, you know, kind of, you know, obviously all committed to ensuring a successful kickoff for, for our 21, 22 school year. And I think we have them in certainly not every language, but a lot of languages. We have capacity in a lot of different ways to be able to have these conversations with central staff who have been engaged in this, but could be directed, you know, to be making these one-on-one phone calls. I mean, I'm not looking at the parent, parent, family information set. I'm sorry. Whatever they are. You know who I mean, to do this all. I mean, let's be real. But you could bring in a huge cadre of professionals to be able to make these calls, whether it's your district support specialists, your parent liaisons, your parent liaisons at school sites. So, that you really could make these kind of contacts. And I think that that could be a remarkable way for us to kind of go through this process. I'd love, you know, in the next week, to, when we come back together, to see some kind of a proposal that would allow us to do that. So, that then as we're making these decisions, you know, about the kind of swing between these two extremes, we'd have better information that is absolutely rooted in what our actual families actually want. You know, we're talking about a lot of kind of, we think 30% of this and 20% of that and let's get the real answer. I mean, it's not beyond our capacity. It's, you know, it's not space-age technology. This is just something that takes time and effort and work and commitment from our human capital, which is by all means our greatest strength here in our district. On the, you know, to take it to the next step too, in building these two kind of separate school districts, an in-person and a remote, and dedicating our professional development time, which I think has been expressed well here tonight, not only is it incredibly important, it is incredibly rare for us to have this opportunity. For us to have 10 days of paid time for our teachers that we can absolutely devote to professional development is unheard of. I mean, it just, it doesn't happen. Any other time we've talked about increasing professional development, we're talking about increasing, you know, having to pay for that time. In this case, the Commonwealth has given us the opportunity that they, we can pay, you know, the money is there to pay for these days. We don't have to, you know, kind of scrounge around to find it. My only concern in looking at it as two extremes is that, you know, I'm no epidemiologist, but I know what people are telling me, that we may get back in September, we may not stay there. And I think that's kind of a universally accepted premise that for all of our planning, for how we open the doors, we have to be prepared for what we reasonably can anticipate happening. And if we, and I'm just concerned that if we spend this incredibly valuable time on professional development in creating two different districts, separated but equal, has been proven wrong 100 different times. We need to, we need to provide both the development and the structures that allows that kind of flexibility. You know, I'm not saying it's easy and again, I think that it's a, it will be a challenge, but I do think it's something that Lowell can do. I think that the collective talent and expertise that we have within our district has the capacity to do that. I think there's the will in our community to want to be that gold-level standard for our teachers and for our families and students. And I think that this does offer us an opportunity that, you know, I think as Dr. McLaughlin was saying, yes, there are all these really, really bad things, but it's also giving us some opportunities to try some things and to make some different investments that in the long term will really benefit our district. And I think, I'm hoping that as, you know, you've got a whole week, you should be able to put something together, right? Seems easy enough. But I'd like to keep those kind of front of mind because I do think that those are some opportunities that will not come again. And that in anticipating what the, what may be ahead of us, having a little foresight, I think, could be, could hold us in very good stead. Thank you all. And thank you very much to everyone for the work that you did.
Thank you to all the principals that came tonight. Bob, did you have another question?
You can make me wait last if you want. May I go to Mr. Dillon? Doesn't matter.
No, he went first.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Are you an epidemiologist?
Oh, no. I'm just saying, you know, when someone says something like my colleague, Mr. Dakota, said to me, you usually want to come right back. But when you got ADD and you got to sit here, whoa, what am I going to remember? So, listen, I'm going to start by saying what Ms. Clark started, thanking people. We got some of our highest-performing principals here. They have some of our department heads sitting in the balcony. I want to thank them for sure, all these people. But I want to thank this superintendent. You've been here a year now. It's probably the toughest year I ever seen in my lifetime and I think you put the best team that I've ever seen in the city of Lowell. I think the mayor's very lucky to have this team in front of him. And Dr. Gillery, when I'm hearing off some of the principals, they love working with you. Ms. Desmond, I mean, I could talk about you all night. I mean, just some of the things you do and what you did for the high school graduation this year, to me, was incredible. Number two, so thank you, everybody. I can't wait to evaluate the superintendent. You might have two years in before you get an evaluation, but that's another story for another time. The last thing I want to say is, I'm glad that my colleague, Mr. Dakota, has taught me that he's had 35 years of real meaningful professional development. What I tried to bring here tonight, when you talk about professional development, is sometimes you can't teach old dogs like me a new trick, okay? And I think we need to change. So, I think it's very important that we look at this professional development, not to separate people, but I think it's very important to put your pre-K to fourth grade teachers in with special ed people and teach them their professional development. Then you take music teachers, phys ed teachers, English language learning teachers and let them have their professional development. I think it would work much better. And all I'm concerned about is 10 days. I don't want to get rid of any PD. What I want to do is to make sure it's meaningful. So, 10 days, I don't know where they're going to be yet. You know, are they in-school? Are they at-home virtual training? I'd like to know that. But I think it's very important that we look a little bit deeper into professional development because I think 10 days is a long time. And the last thing I want to say is, when Ms. Doherty said the percentages out of the Lowell Sun, I would never go by the Lowell Sun, Mr. Superintendent. What I'd like to do is get our approximately 1,150 teachers, I'm not sure how many, and I'd like to know, do they want to come back or don't they? And I'd like to see that number. I think that would be a great number and I don't know how hard that would be. Get a survey. Find out who wants to go back and who don't. I'd love to hear that if you can do it. If we can't, I'm fine. Mayor, thank Mayor, thank you very much.
No, thank you. So, I missed, oh, I don't know, I lost track. Mr. Dillon, then Ms. Doherty. What's that?
I was on deck, I think. Thank you. So, going to what Mr. Howie just said, actually, like, with professional development, like breakaway scenarios are not an uncommon thing, where, you know, you know, full-school professional development takes place together, where it's relevant to the school, and breakaway into your maybe subject area or however that gets done. You know, I mean, that's pretty typical, you know? So that would be, you know, something that would help on your side, getting people, and, you know, I'm a big proponent of that, too, is getting professional development that is relative to what you do. So I think that's, you know, a great idea and how we can kind of help that. The other thing I want to say is, it sounds, it sounds a little crazy at these meetings, like, for the public, maybe, where is prepared is anybody around? This, this administration has been ahead of the game all the way through. And so when I get, when I hear people talking about other districts and how they're doing it right, let's see how everything falls once school starts. Because I think we're as prepared for any scenario possible as we can be in, in an unpredictable time. I think we're not leaving any stones unturned. And I think we've done, I, I think we do have a lot of data in, in speaking to our community and speaking to our teachers, and I think we're using it to the best of our ability right now. Don't be fooled by all the questions coming up and, or maybe uncertainty here. We are as prepared. A lot of the people here and the people from Dr. Boyd's staff have made sure of it. And they have been on top of everything, they've been, anytime something has come from Desi or, you know, of course, a month after we needed it, we'd already had it done. We, like, we were already on that path all along. So don't worry. This administration is very well-prepared, and, and every stone is being unturned. And I just, people need to know that. It gets confusing when you hear us talking and you hear these questions come up, people are like, what is going on? Things are good. Thank you.
Thank you, good point. Ms. Doherty and then Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'll be short. Okay, so first I want to say, in, in reference to Mr. Howie's comments about the Lowell Sun, the article is actually quoting Mr. George's on the survey that the UTL teachers, I never saw the survey, so it was just him talking about how, what percentage, and I forget even how many stu, how many teachers participated, whether it was 700 or 900. So that was a quote from him, and they still may have gotten it wrong. I agree, Mr. Howie, they don't always get it right. In terms of what my colleague Ms. Martin said, I think that this idea of doing further outreach to our families, I, I wholeheartedly support it. I know it feels like a huge task, but I wanted to tell you, while Ms. Martin was speaking, I got a text from the, one of the co-chairs of the Citywide Family Council, and she said they have communication systems, they would love to be involved, parent, parent-to-parent forums, parent-to-parent conversations, help parents understand their role in whether they're choosing remote or offline. So I would ask through you, Dr. Boyd, to please reach out to the Citywide Family Council. I want to remind the committee that we, as a full body, this was prior to the newcomers coming in, we voted that we wanted to hear from the Citywide Family Council once a year, we wanted to hear about the work they were doing, we wanted school leadership to be meeting with them regularly, because really, that commitment to two-way communication with our families starts at the top. It starts with us and with our leaders. We have not had any of that happen, and obviously COVID blew up a lot of things. That was one of the things that fell to the side for the, the current school year that just ended. But I would like to, through this, you know, text that's reminding me, hey, we've got parents out there, they, they're a diverse group, they're a growing group, they're a resource. And also part of that 10 days could be some outreach to families. And then, I did have a final note. Oh, in terms of the hybrid, I feel very strongly that the way we're looking at doing it, the kids who are in full-time are every day, because that is the only way that's gonna really help those families who most need their kids in school. Think about it, if you're an essential worker and you've got a job that you have to go in, you can't work remotely, and you have to have a place for your child to get his education, because you can't be there. Two days on and two days off is not gonna help you to do that. And these are our kids, where we see the achievement gap growing and growing, we need the supports for those families. And so I really do feel strongly, I know there is a loss for the kids that are choosing only remote, but the part that really resonated in Ms. Martin's comments were, we need the flexibility. So when we're doing the professional training, I mean, I talked about how we need to do it for the remote, we need to do it for the in-school people. The in-school people should also be getting the remote training as well, though I do see that the focus for those, that's their, they're interested in technology, that's their heart and soul. But we do have to build in that capacity to be flexible, because we know it could happen just on the, like it did to us in March, right? We're taking two weeks off, we never came back, right? We may need to switch over remote at the drop of a hat, so we've got to be prepared for that. But I think that the way the administration is going forward to, you know, make the commitment to be in-school, I know there's still a lot of details to work out, but I think that it does make sense for those families, given that we can't bring everybody back safely. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. I'm really just gonna piggyback on what Ms. Doherty was commenting on with the Citywide Family Council and really making use, I, I love the idea of Ms. Martin's comment about being the gold standard with regard to communication. But I do know how, how already spread thin, many of the fa, the people that we would be asking to do some of that work are already, they're already doing a lot of work, whether it's in that space or not. So I, I think it would be, I think if, I think many of our community members are paying very close attention to this, and as soon as we make a decision, they will make a decision. Many of them have already made a decision, and they just really need, need us to proceed. But I think for families that don't know, you know, so if we put out a, a survey, or a, or really a Family Resource Center put out something and said, what, what would you choose, I think we're going to have a high percentage of families that already know what their choice will be. So, but folks that may delay or not respond immediately, I think partnering with community organizations like the Citywide Family Council, I mean, many of our community members are connected to some other community organizations, so really making use of those relationships to spread the word, maybe not making them expert in these options, but really providing them with additional resources or encouraging families to reach out, to ask additional questions, and then perhaps narrowing it down to some families will need some one-on-one communication or reach out, which I believe, from what Ms. Phillips has presented tonight and at other, you know, in other meetings, some of that really is happening specifically for our families that have some higher needs. So I think just more, doing more of what I believe is already happening. And the other piece is, I think the opting in, you know, having our families make decisions on a quarterly basis, which kind of tied to our report cards, might help. I mean, you know, depending on the month, the days really vary, so, and that would at least give some kind of commitment to families, of course, barring any sort of outstanding or exceptional circumstance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Ms. Martin?
Just one final note, because to Ms. Doherty's point, as I was looking at the, the true hybrid option in, in the first presentation, it really included all four options. It included full-time, you know, a cohort of students that were full-time onsite, a cohort that were full-time remote, and then a cohort that was trading back and forth. So it really gave parents the most flexibility. I mean, so that's kind of what's in my mind. I understand your point, because there are absolutely gonna be families who can't, you know, who can't flip one way or the other, that are gonna need, you know, so I, what's most, what I liked most about that option is the flexibility of it for families, recognizing that that's also what makes it so difficult. So, yeah, no worries. Thanks.
Good point. Thank you. So just quickly, a lot of good points tonight. My only questions are, I know we, we were talking about the three to six-foot distancing, so the state, right, or Desi had said three feet, we're saying six, but are we also looking at, you know, we could do five, right, if we needed to? We don't have to strict to, stick to three or six, we can, if five works and we get more kids situated safely, we can always look at that, right? We're not just...
You can, the question would be, should you? So it's, I, I can't find another state or another organization that's using less than six feet as the verifiable social distancing. So I would just caution the committee, I just don't know that the city should be in the arena of trying to sell people on a different social distancing guideline. And I'm, I question the science behind that three feet, because everybody's having the same space constraints that we're having, Mr. Mayor, outside of Massachusetts, and I don't see others looking to try to cram more kids in. So, you, but yes, Desi did authorize you as an entity to consider that.
Right, all right. And the other thing, I just want to make sure, Ms. Dr. Hall, you're the only lawyer here tonight, we want to make sure that we're looking at our legal, you know, everybody's legal rights are understood, right? Transportation, things, I know we're talking about lotteries for transportation and maybe getting into classrooms and stuff like that, but we do have to prepare for bumps in the road where people will challenge us for things like that. So I think that's all I had to add, I just want to make sure, we'll look into the Wi-Fi, the air purifiers and, and all that stuff for the schools as far as the city's concerned, so.
Just want to make sure we recognize, we have Jane Mosher-Canty and Mike Ortiz that work on behalf of the, the school district as attorneys, part of Dr. Hall's team, Mr. Mayor, and they are definitely on top of many of these very complex and sensitive questions as your in-house councils.
Okay. You already spoke twice.
We didn't answer the question.
I know, I was just gonna get there.
Yeah.
So, one other question on my other notes were the after-day, after-school programs. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, there's, so, and you may have noticed this in Dr. McLaughlin's presentation, we have to make a determination of what are our partners that are gonna have access to schools and who are we identifying as visitors that we're limiting from campus to mitigate risk. Now, I will, the before and after care and also partnerships there, those are gonna be critical partnerships that we have to look to. We're gonna be looking to expand those across. I think the challenge and the question is gonna be, Mr. Mayor, how many of those are still existing after this economic shortfall that hits? So I don't know that particular caller and who the provider was, but there are gonna be some providers, and there may be some providers that are no longer providers. And we're working to make sure we can partner with as many as are able, and Ms. Phillips been diligent at trying to make sure that our partners are continuing to be engaged in all of these conversations. So, so, yes, but, question, I, I don't know the caller's particular provider, I can say that before and after care is definitely something that's part of our consideration in planning.
Okay, thank you. So we're all set on this section. Until next week.
Motion to report on progress?
That's, that's it.
Yeah, all right. Yep.
And also, I don't know if we got the full polling of next Wednesday, but some of the things you discussed is the reason why we need to kind of up the ante on the timeline versus waiting until the full 10th.
Okay, so a motion, except as a report of progress by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Doherty. So now we're on to the budget.
I'm gonna give a round of applause to these folks in the room, because y'all did an excellent job. So I was, now we're, now we're on to phase three, and try to figure out how we make this actually happen. There is, thank you, really appreciate it, thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe the next in ours is the budget?
Yep.
All right. So, here before you now, we, you remember from our last discussion, we held off on the 1/12 budget, because we all are continuing to be hopeful that you'll have more to be able to plan for than simply a 1/12. Well, here before you, we're hoping to balance that with our recommendation before you tonight. So we don't have more than that, you did get the update from Ms. Turner that we're hopeful that next month, maybe it'll be a multi-month, but now we're at the last of our opportunity for July to carry over for August, and you saw in Ms. Phillips' equity analysis, how do we start to mitigate some of this uncertainty, to make sure that we can sustain operations, make commitments to families? So the one big shift here is that your 1/12 for our recommendation going into July was a continuation budget, looking at level funding based on FY 1920. We're now suggesting that you utilize the same flexibility you have for 1/12 funding, but now with what we got, that the likelihood is gonna be level-funded plus going forward, that we look at the 1/12 as level funding for the next fiscal year. There are some additional challenges there, there are some additional assumptions that we can make, but one thing that's extremely important to point out, this opportunity to come back into school and, as Ms. Martin articulated, two districts at the same time. We can't do that with less money. We have found a way through us both leveraging grants, the operational efficiencies that we established last year to offset costs that have been fully vetted and discussed in-depth by this committee, as well as some difficult but doable cuts that we've also discussed, that with level funding and assuming these grants, that we can move forward to offer both of these opportunities to families with some level of assurance. You're gonna see that within this one month, we'll share out with you. If at any point we learn that it's less than level funding, you should know what's remains for your opportunities to continue to serve families in those types of scenarios, means going to likely district-wide virtual offerings. Again, Ms. Turner will share with you, but remember all of the savings you accumulated that could offset, that speaks to how a virtual district-wide scenario can be done, perhaps with less, less funding than what we need for in-person. And now running two districts, obviously, costs even more. But Ms. Turner's done Newman's work here to get us to this point. We are gonna recommend 1/12 approval with a going-forward level-funding budget to carry into August, and I believe we've also resolved a couple of the points of significant discussion among the committee during the last time, when we had a really detailed conversation about level funding. But look forward to feedback, and our recommendation will be approval of the 1/12. Ms. Turner?
Can I just ask one quick question? Sorry. Are we gonna go through this slide by slide, or are we just gonna? Okay. Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
It's the same, it's the same spreadsheet you are applying.
Right. So it is problematic to base the 1/12 budget on FY '20 expenses that will lock us into, I'm sorry? I don't know, but we don't, it's, they don't...
We all have our package, right?
Yeah. It's not in your packet? Okay, so it's problematic to base the 1/12 budget on FY '20 expenses, since that will lock us into paying the personnel and apparel of the FY '20 staff. Rather, we recommend basing the $14.9 million approved by the city on 1/12 of an FY '21 level-funded budget, which includes reductions that we have suggested. If the state revenue and/or city cash are less than level-funded, we would have to do virtual schools. The savings for a three-month period of closure in FY '20 resulted in several million dollars in savings, so going virtual for the year would be far more significant. While I'm on that, I wanted to point out that I thought we had about $100,000 surplus, that we got the surplus down to $100,000. I'm happy to say it's actually $30,000. So despite all those millions of dollars, we didn't leave much on the table, and the $30,000 wasn't even $30,000 until recently, when some purchase orders were closed, and the money goes back into the accounts. So millions of dollars in our revolving accounts rather than left on the table, so I'm happy about that one at least. The first budget spreadsheet that is a budget summary for the level-funded FY '21 budget, it shows that if we level fund cost, which from our existing budget, that's $179 million. If we add the contractually required salary increases of 5.4, health insurance... If we add the contractually required salary increases of 5.4, health insurance increase of 1.2, the fair student funding increased allocation to schools, it originally was 2, 2,74,000, but now it's down to 1 million because we had to adjust. COVID air quality would cost us about 500,000, COVID remote learning is 3 million, COVID protective equipment is 2.1 million. So those are all the additional expenses which would add up to 192 million. If you look at the anticipated revenue to offset the 192 million, we have level-funded chapter 70, 163 million, but thanks to, thank you, I just got a text telling me that it was released and I looked it up, the chapter 70 that's released right now temporarily for the three months is 166.9 million, which is 3.9 million higher than level funding. But originally, when I did this spreadsheet, we were assuming level funding only, which is 163 million, level-funded city cash, if we assume that we're going to get the 16.3 from the city and the ESER CARES Act of 4.1 million, the school reopening grant, which is one, the grant that will cover PPE, the ESER grant and the PPE grant are both guaranteed. The state tech grant that Ms. Desmond did, that's a competitive grant, it's not guaranteed. So that 2.1, we might have got 3.9 million dollars additional with the level funding and the inflation, but it could be wiped out if we don't get this 2.1. So it's still all up in the air, the revenue and the expense side. But the anticipated shortfall was 3.7 and the balance and recommendations that we were considering to, you know, offset that would be the reduction in central administration and fringe, the reduction to the lease, utilizing the revolving account balances that we've built up and pre-purchased the supplies by using the, by reducing the FY 21 expenses. By, by pre-purchase and using FY 20 money, we were able to reduce FY 21 expenses. So those are the ways that we were considering offsetting the shortage. And other, other than that summary spreadsheet, I do, I did include the budget, a level-funded budget for FY 21 with an anticipated August 1/12 amount so that you could see line by line if you had any questions on anything.
So largely, this is the same conversation you had that we went to, now we've adjusted it based on our needs, we're going to have to come back to this conversation probably monthly. The big adjustment here is now you're moving into your next fiscal year that allows us to plan for the next fiscal year, or I'm sorry, implement the next fiscal year. And we do have some confidence that you're going to be looking at a level funding plus scenario, at least for a full quarter, if not more. There is a question about what the city will ultimately be able to do in terms of net school spending, we haven't gotten that official memo yet, so I want to make sure I'm clear here, there is appropriation that we have for one month. So we'll wait for those appropriations from the city, that'll come through the mayor and the council and as we go forward, you're used to that process now. So our recommendation right now, Mr. Mayor, is approval of the 1/12 with a going-forward level funding scenario for FY 21.
Okay, Ms. Darney?
Thank you, I have a couple of questions. So the, all those COVID expenses, which is 5.6 million in your first column there, the air quality, remote learning, protective equipment, is there any chance of getting reimbursed for any of those things?
The COVID expenses, when I built, when I just did the grant for school reopening grant, the COVID, all the air qual, you know, air quality type things remotely, all of those things are what we're putting on the grants.
Because the, well then, it's not completely covering it, right? Or does it? It doesn't?
So in the budget itself, it was 5.6 million because we already did 2.4 million with, you know, Chromebooks.
Right.
So the, it was 5.6 million when you add up the COVID cost and 5.3 million potentially could be covered by the grant, so it's only leaving 300,000 not covered by grants, if we get all of the grants.
All the grants, okay.
Because some of them are competitive.
So is that coming out of the E-CAREs or the CAREs?
So the ESER grant, I wrote, when we wrote the grant, we, if we added any staff, we end up having to pay the city 9% for the staff or we have to pay MTRS 9%. So when we first did it, we were putting social workers and guidance counselors on there just because social and emotional health right now is going to be very valid to put on a grant. But when we did that, it cost us 350,000 in fees, the 9% retirement cost that they charge us, so we squashed that and just put the entire, the entire 4.1 million as health insurance because we wanted it to offset regular, our regular general fund budget. So the 4.1 is covering all health insurance, the school reopening grant includes the air purifiers, the air filters, other, you know, technology-type licenses and things like that, any COVID cost.
Okay. And I just had one more question, if I could follow up. So some of these positions, you know, they're heartfelt cuts for me, I think that it's not the way I would want to go. I, I just want to know, I know we're approving a budget that's just another month, right? Are these positions lost forever if we do find that we have the money? Because I would really want, and I know, I noticed and I appreciate, Dr. Boyd, the district support specialists, those roles, who I thought were so important to the social emotional health of our families and, and that you've moved that over to, under remote learning, so we're not actually losing that person or that role, I mean, however you want to look at it. But there are other positions here that I think are important positions, so I just would like to know if the money is there, what are our options if we only approve this 1/12 next step that we're talking about?
Your priorities are going to be twofold and then they relate back to you. If ultimately, safety's obviously top, so assuming we get these grants, if we don't, you heard Ms. Turner share how we have to start to offset those first, those are safety requirements. Then you're looking at school funding. So you, we had originally anticipated increasing school budgets by 2 million, here you're increasing school budgets by 1 million, that becomes your second-tier priority. Third tier are, and this relates, third tier are those positions. Now, what relates, and you mentioned it already, a third, approximately we should expect are going to be within remote learning, which now moves to a school budget that's going to come back to you. Some of these positions may be coming off of central office, but they actually have very much a need within our remote learning. There's two of those positions, you see, the one here suggested first is the district support, there's going to be a need along those lines. The second, the second that'll line up there is you see a line item for academic coaches, there's going to be need there. The third, special education around remote, so when you start to think as we start to build out that remote learning, there may be actually, we start to move over to those school budgets because our school budgets overall shift significantly. So we will be bringing back to you, once we build out these models, what that ultimately looks like. The one position you and I have had talks about for a long period of time, so I wanted to make sure we highlighted that one first for the committee, that we, we have full knowledge that's going to move over and then we'll start moving between. I could tell you, Dr. Guillory has already come with a very clear recommendation that he, he's going to need one of those academic coaches to stand up this virtual schooling opportunity, he has knowledge that he need, he's going to need that, but we've got to build it out as a full package, it just can't be these one-offs. So yes, it, they will likely relate. One, safety, we've got to make sure we offset that. Two, our school budgets. Three, any positions, particularly those that were cut that had people in them and that you may very well and will likely find that those school budgets and those positions start to relate now because a third of our positions are going to be likely for this remote school that we're building up.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question on, so you're taking the, the health insurance costs and putting them all within the, is that the ESER?
Uh huh, yes.
So to my understanding, you know, benefits, health insurance, all of the benefits that we provide our staffing with are all considered part of the whole of, of, you know, of compensation for that individual and that you can't split them out amongst different allocations, that you can split them out by percentage, that say 50% of the cost of this person goes against local funding while 50% goes against a grant, so that you, you do them in a whole, in a whole way, you pay for them, you know, the 100%, but that you can't separate out one portion of our benefits and just put it all on one funding source when you don't have the equivalent salary with that?
No, as a matter of fact, the state, they had to approve what, we had to go through a process of approval for the 4.1 million, they asked us to justify why we would want to put, you know, the health insurance on, how are we justifying that? And we explained that that's the benefits of the staff we need to help children get through the pandemic. It was approved by them and we were allowed to separate it out because it's like, it's being treated as chapter 70 funds, it's not restrictive like most grants are, so we're fine, where it was actually already approved.
So you, we'll be paying for them in chapter 70 but paying for their benefits here?
Right, but it's, chapter 70, I mean, the ESER grant has no restrictions like the title grants, it's being treated, like the, the best way to phrase it is it's like additional chapter 70 funds, it's just being given as a grant. But I'm, it, so yes, it's, it's not restrictive, we're not being restricted like we would with the title grants or the other grants. So the school reopening grant, the PPE grant, that's specific, it has to be only COVID-related costs that were not included in your budget originally, that's very restrictive. The state tech grant that Ms. Desmond applied for, that was very restrictive, but the ESER grant, they're letting us use it for anything, we're not, we're not being, they're not being restrictive at all.
I'm trying to understand the thought process of not just allocating the appropriate percentage of, of salary and benefits together.
If we would have done that, we would have lost a lot of purchase and power because they would charge us anything, anytime you put a salary on the grant, they charge us the MTRS 9% automatically. Or if it's a non-MTRS staff member, it, we now have to pay the city for their 9% retirement. So if we put salaries on the grant, we lose, we automatically have to pay 9%, even though the employees pay in their own MTRS deductions. So it's like double, the, the state is getting double the money and we're losing that. So it's best for us to find a non, you know, like a non-salary expense to put on the grant. At first, we thought of transportation, but because of the, you know, we don't even know if we're going to go back, so if I put transportation on the grant, we wouldn't have that to charge. So health insurance was the only other one that was a large cost that we could save the district, we would have had to pay for that out of the general fund. So we're treating ESER and chapter 70 as interchangeable and it's, this is very acceptable, this is, you know, they had to approve it, they had, we couldn't just put anything on there, they've approved it already.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? One quick question, where are we with the computers? Did the, the order's already in, I assume, right? And we?
No, as a matter, the, the expected delivery date is the end of July, so soon, we're hoping soon because the city is holding open the purchase order for us so that we don't, you know, they don't close it out like they do with the other ones. But there's a shortage everywhere and we're, we're ahead of the game because we ordered somewhere that they, we don't have the shortage, they're going to get it to us before, before school begins, from what our tech guys told us. So yes, we're expecting it, the expected delivery date was the end of July.
Okay, so, but that's Friday, right? So do you think I've got my Friday?
Maybe it will happen Friday. Yeah, we're hoping, that's what they said, so.
I think, Mr. Mayor, though, you bring up an important point, it came up, this is procurement, delivery dates, as you're seeing in your own personal lives, I'm sure, this all starts to get delayed. The stuff you're purchasing as a community, no different than what other communities are purchasing, so, and very important question, I think another one to highlight here, we are budgeting and assuming the cost of one year's worth of PPE. That does obviously change what we're ordering, our three months' worth at a time. So we'll have a three-month stockpile, is the catchphrase of the day, going forward and we'll keep replenishing as we need. So that number is also to watch, but again, to store a year's worth of PPE, to store a year's worth of PPE, not the recommended path forward, what is three months of need versus what you're forecasting, this is a new day and time. We'll determine if that's higher or too low, we're assuming a cost for a year, but you should watch that number as well. That's also one that we've been checking in, confirming, making sure that we'll get that delivery. And then you saw from Dr. Hall that to get those purifiers by, you've got to place that order coming up. So very good question, Mr. Mayor, that's going to be something for the committee to, the procurement timeline is likely not one that you have to keep an eye on as a committee, but very relevant during this pandemic. Again, the recommendations approval as written, I believe, Ms. Sheen, we got to state it in a certain way though, if I recall, with.
So the way I have it is approve the adoption of the 1/12 budget for August 2020 for the amount of 14,948,596.
Okay, motion by Ms. Darney, second by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
2020, 2021 school calendar revision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've already had this discussion, you had that within the presentation, I just want to emphasize two points, the agreement with UTL is in addition to submitting the waiver, so I'll, I would suggest that the motion be made in the form of, with the first day of school, September 17th, pending approval of the waiver from DESI. The second point is one that's come up that I want to also, again, give credit to the partnership with UTL, they have offered to any vacation day, continue to discuss those vacation days going forward, knowing that this is a school start calendar and none of us can predict what the full year will look like. They've been very willing to say, we're open to those conversations going forward, so you'll likely see calendar again coming back to the committee. Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Dillon?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Boyd, can you just touch on quickly the, what's the difference, pros and cons between the 16th and 17th start date?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Dillon. So the, the pro of the 16th is really one of communication with the community because DESI puts out this information and it becomes the same as the three feet versus six feet. So it's going to be important for us, we'll have a different start date than most other districts because DESI is stating the 16th is the latest possible start date. That would be the pro of the 16th. The downside of the 16th is we would have one less training day that we've all discussed. The pro of the 17th is this is the collaboration with UTL, it gives an additional day, one day upfront, it's a minimal request in terms of the waiver of DESI. The downside of the 17th, again, is the same of the upside of the 16th, I think you have the additional downside, there's a slight, not zero, but you know, pretty close to it, that, you know, for some reason DESI may choose not to sign off on the waiver, we feel confident with one day and the fact that it relates to contract, relates to collaboration with UTL, that the one day will be approved, but it's not our authority, hence the need for that complicated motion, I think.
Okay, yeah, so it's all around, I mean, prep or prep days and the teachers would appreciate the extra day?
That's our understanding.
Okay, yeah, great, thank you.
Any other questions on that? So we need, yeah, so, motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Darney, roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Let's see, approval, 1.5, approval of the payment of the diversity grant.
Thank you, this is more procedural than anything, the approval, recommendations approval as written, Dr. Hall is available for questions, required procedure on the part of the grant for the committee to take action.
Sure, Ms. Darney?
Thank you, quick question, and I love this idea, I just want to know, how are we going to be dispensing it? Are we doing like an incentive to join and then after you stay for a certain amount of time, you get a follow-up? That would be my preference, but I just want to know what the plan is for dispersing it.
Sure, it's a year-by-year grant that we applied for and got last year, but we've been allocated $10,000 to aid in recruiting, retention and relocation allowances for those that are our new teachers who identify as diverse. We would have had some names for you, but we've run into some stumbling blocks with We would have had some names for you, but we've run into some stumbling blocks with a hiring freeze. So, we plan on equally dispersing it to those new teachers who identify as diverse, will commit to teaching in Lowell for three years and will participate in an aspiring teacher network and some professional development sessions and sort of serve as ambassadors as well for further recruitment, Ms. Darney.
Sounds excellent. I would move to approve.
All right. Motion approved by Ms. Darney, second by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
4-6, consideration of the vote of the proposed amendment to transportation contract.
I'm pleased to bring this one to you. I don't think it needs any introduction. Recommend approval as written. Dr. Hall is available for questions.
So, this is what we went through last night?
Yes, sir.
And no changes?
No changes.
Okay. All right. Moved to approve by Ms. Darney, second by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right. 9:19, motion to adjourn by Ms. Darney, second by Mr. Dakota. So, New Hampshire is going by the three-feet rule, three-foot rule, I heard, so. No, I know that, but I'm just saying.